I'd like to start off tonight's zoning board of appeals meeting and we have a speaker at first and please introduce yourself and tell us what you're gonna do.
Well, my name is Scott Leddie AC. I'm town manager and yes, you have come to the right show. This is the zoning board of appeals. And one of the things I've been doing is just kind of visiting boards and committees and trying to let everybody who is watching know what the boards and committees do and actually thank them. All these folks that are at the table tonight, at least on that side, are volunteers. They're not getting paid. They have families and they have lives. And they take time out of their schedules to come here and do things for the town. And many of them, if not all of them, have probably been on multiple committees and multiple boards, elected or not elected. So this one is the zoning board of appeals and their job is to help make sure Abington's zoning rules are applied fairly and with common sense. They review special requests from property owners, like someone who might need an exception or a variance like I'll be asking for for the town later tonight. And they do special permits. So I want to introduce them and we have Richard Peterson, Robert Manning, Andrew Leveralt, Andrew Burbine, and Richard Negreli who's not here tonight. And I want to thank them all because we need committee members and we need volunteers to do a lot of. There's a lot of different committees, a lot of different boards that really make up our government. So thank you all for helping.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it and I'll let you open the meeting.
Thank you. First thing we do is cover old business and new. Approval of minutes from September 11th, 2025. Entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 11th, 2025 as presented.
Second? Second, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we get into the, do we have any correspondence we need to be concerned other than as pertains to these items?
No, just the agenda items we have, which.
Okay, alright, great. Richard Negreli is not here tonight. He's our third member of the, Andrew and Andy are the alternate members. So I asked Andrew Leveralt to be our third voting member tonight. Andy will be involved in discussion except for one of the items. So I just wanted to point that out. So the first thing we're gonna cover, well, there's two in a row, they're petitions of the town of Abington for a variance under 175-82D3 to convert vacant school, convert a vacant school to multi-unit dwelling with 21-bedroom units. The property is located at 65 Factor Avenue on Assessor's Map, 16 Lot 33, in the medium-density residential R30 zone. And Scott is here to present that and then, are you gonna do both together or just one at a time?
If it pleases the board, I would like to do them both together.
Okay, so I have to read the second one also. The second petition of the town of Abington for a variance under 175-82D3 to convert vacant school to multi-unit dwelling with 21-bedroom units. The property is located at 171 Adams Street on Assessor's Map, 53 Lot 67, in the high-density residential R20 zone. Please repeat your name and address and tell us what you're here for.
I'm Scott Leddie AC. I'm your town manager. I don't live in this town. I live in Richmond, but I'm here quite a bit. So tonight, I feel like I live there sometimes. So tonight when I presented to you, as most people in town know, the Center School and the North School. These schools have been mothballed for quite some time now and they've gone through the process, through the board of selection and through town meeting to surplus them and dispose of them. And I've tried several times, we've met with people within the community to try and find out what great uses would be for them, what they would like to see. You know, for us to, as a town, tear the buildings down and and sort of fill in the hole or clean it up would probably cost about a million and a half per building, maybe more at this point. Those are 2019 numbers. What we would hope to do and what I'm asking tonight is to permit these for up to 20 units, 21-bedroom units per building. We've had some conceptual plans drawn out and that's pretty much what would fit in there with maybe a little bit of modification. Obviously, the buildings would have to be gutted. We've put out several RFPs to try and have this done with an affordable component. We've had no interest in this, what the town and what I've been instructed to do is bring this around and get it permit ready, permit in hand, that somebody can walk to the building department for plans and then take it from there. And they may require some site plan review beyond that with the planning board, but we feel that if we do this, we have a better shot of selling these buildings. You know, having these back on the assessors on the tax roll, you know, between the two of them, it's probably a hundred thousand plus in a year just in property taxes, never mind what we see even, you know, meal tax, excise taxes, things like that. And it will offer, at the one-bedroom component, it will offer a level of flexibility for those who are looking to downsize or it might be starter communities, but it's not likely to obviously bring in families or create any sort of burden upon the school department.
Are there questions for Scott as we start out? Center School, as presented on the map that was filed with the application, Washington Street, the access to Washington Street and the ball field are, is that still part of the school or is that separated? Did we vote to separate that and did we actually separate it?
We haven't separated it yet, but it will be separated. So the, and I think people are familiar with that area from where that current asphalt ends in the back, where the ledge starts and going down to the field where we would separate it. And that would remain with the town. So the ball field will remain with the town.
I had several questions whether or not they were gonna be permitted to allow the build down there as opposed to building up above. I said, no, this is just the school itself. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yep, yeah, and our preference, obviously, and what we expect by doing this and making this easier is that that's all they'll do. You know, with anything with the school, I think that we're hoping they'll be able to reuse that building.
Did you see any need to change the physical height of the building at all in making this building permit possible?
No, really, you know, maybe at North School, if somebody's interested in that, they can, you know, explore it. But Center School, after discussing it with the neighbors and with the community, it really was, let's try and keep that footprint as much as possible. It's not going higher. I think there's actually opportunities there to reduce asphalt. They don't believe that they need as much area there, but of course, you know, we'll work with with the developer when they go through planning for the site.
My last question then is asked back at the North School. Given the fact that it's in a triangle-dimensional, three-directional, traffic-sensational piece of property, would the town assume any responsibility for changing traffic patterns, flow, islands, lights, sidewalks? Does the major route 58 fall upon the state to maintain as opposed to us? And would we have to worry about exitsing on side streets as opposed to the main? Right now, it accesses off onto the main street and has a side street, I think, on Adams Street. Would that just be the same access and access routes?
I think that they would, they'll go in front of the planning board to review that and come up with a plan. But certainly, I think what you'll find is a building with 20 single-bedroom units. What was there when it was in its heyday created probably a lot more vehicles than this ever will.
Good, Mr. Chairman. Any RFP that you issue would that require the developer to discuss traffic patterns or traffic studies?
Well, just the permitting portion of it alone will require it. They'll be filed, this will grant them the variance, but this is gonna have to come in like any other developer would to get a building permit and to get a permit for the site authorization. So that, at that point, yeah, they'll have to look at traffic patterns and issues like that.
So now there was some level of concern and perhaps disappointment about the Zero Summer Street project not resulting in a life on end of Summer Street and 18. People seem to be concerned about that.
Well, I mean, I won't speak to that project, but certainly those things were always looked at and always considered.
Yeah, okay. Okay, do you have any other questions for him off of that?
I don't have anything right now. Just when we look for variance, right, we have to find soil conditions, shape, topography, as being affected, and that has some kind of hardship. So could you speak to that, Scott?
Certainly, we did hand out a brief to you, so you should have that also. But certainly the fact that the sites are larger sites in any area, that are very dense and the hardship that we've tried earnestly to sell these and, you know, so it's creating a financial burden and a burden overall for the town maintenance. And again, there's also the fact that, you know, it's providing some much-needed housing and sort of a entry-level housing or downsized housing that the town needs. So I guess the overall hardship is that we don't have enough of it.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, Amy Questle, Town Council. So it's a little bit interesting because your bylaw under 82D3, it says to authorize a variance for a particular use of a parcel of land or for an existing building thereon. So this is a use variance and so if you look at the, if you look at the unusualness of this, it's the existing building and what can that be used for? So this isn't, you're not gonna take this school and turn it into retail. You know, it's, that's what the unusualness is that you have this school that you, that you, that the town is trying to reuse. And then Scott did mention the hardship. And then the third would be, you know, is there derogation from the zoning bylaw? And in this instance, the argument there is that it's a residential use in a residential zone. Granted, it's a multifamily residential use in a single-family zone, but it's not as if it's gonna, it's not as if they're putting a warehouse. They're not converting the school to a warehouse, for example. That, that could be a derogation, you know, as sincere, you know. And then the other thing is that with use variances with regard to structures, there's very, there's very little case law except that there was a case that, that came out that actually was, was one of my cases. In, it's a Provincetown case. It's a 2024 Mass Appeals Court case where it was, the structure was actually a deck and the deck was between two properties and when the court looked at the overall scheme of the structure, there was really no other place that this, that this deck could go. And so they granted the variance based on the structure. And that's really what I think is being asked for here is that they're asking for the variance, the use variance based on the structure that's there.
Not the, not the real property.
Correct, yep.
And just a little more on the derogation. It's in our 30 zone, right? There's only really predominantly one use allowed in that R30 zone.
One's in our 30, one's in our 20.
I'm just talking about Center School.
Okay, yeah.
So, so there's only one use allowed for that. So isn't that, wasn't that when that was established to be single-family R30-sized lots and now we're potentially putting a 20-unit apartment building into an R30 zone? Is that not a derogation?
Well, that's what you have to decide. If that's a derogation or, like I said, is, could they come in and ask, they could come in and ask for a use variance to turn it into a warehouse. You know, is that more, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that is.
That's something that.
Right, that's something that you guys have to figure out, but yeah. And you have to take the three in totality. They have to meet all three.
Yeah, thanks.
Are there any other questions for Scott at the moment? Okay, Scott, thank you. I'd like to see if there's anyone from the public who would like to come up and speak on this matter. Let us know your name and address and what you have to say.
Jackson Connell, 77 Factor Ave. I just want to start off by saying I'm in favor of developing the Center School. It's my backyard. I don't want a vacant school back there. I think eventually, sooner or later, there's gonna be an issue back there. But I've been paying pretty close attention to this and everything I've seen as far as plans goes for 12 to 15 units in there. And now all of a sudden, we're talking about 20, which is a big difference. And it sounds like you guys have plans, but everything that's been shared publicly that I've seen has been for 12 to 15. So that's why I'm a little confused about why we're asking for approval for 20 units where the study that the town paid for came back and said that 15 was the maximum that could fit in there. So that's where I get a little bit worried that we're trying to cram a bunch of units in there and the effect of that would add on traffic and things like that in there. And if we approve 20, then they come back and say, oh, we need more space to fit 20 in there. I don't know how the zoning rules work on that, but it just seems to me like we're trying to cram too many units into a building that the study that the town paid for said maximum was 15.
So you would prefer that they keep to the current footprint?
Yes.
Or whatever that means and, okay.
Yeah, I think keeping to the current footprint and without trying to just cram as many possible units in there and just create a very dense facility back there that's gonna then have 20 cars, at least 20 cars in there because you're gonna have a car there. And there's already cars flying down Factor Ave as a cut through to get around all that traffic on Summer Street that you mentioned. And I think this is just gonna be a recipe for, for more of that. And kind of staying true to what the study that the town paid for from the beginning found is the best option.
Anyone else have questions?
Maybe Scott could respond as to why it's 20 versus 12 to 15.
So initially, that was just a conceptual plan when we, way back and through the Affordable and Trust, they were generous enough to help us. We brought a consultant in to start looking at that building. Our hope back then was hopefully converting it into some affordable housing. The, the building does lend itself. There's a existing area that is a gymnasium. So they kind of looked at what's there for classrooms and breaking it up to get you probably 12 units and maybe a couple more in the gymnasium areas. Certainly, North School has more of an opportunity for an expansion to get to that 20 number. But it wouldn't take, it wouldn't be much outside their footprint if they were to want to remove the gymnasium or whatever because it's really not a very usable part of the building. To expand it, to make it so that they could get up to 20 units. And 20 units is just a number where maybe a developer can start to make some money on that. Where we've got, anybody walking in there is going to be looking at upfront costs just on hazmat remediation of just under a million dollars, probably seven or eight hundred thousand dollars per building. So there's, we don't expect when we put these out to bid, I hope we get offered, you know, a fair amount of money. But I think that the fact is, is they won't offer a lot for the properties and if anything at all. What they'll offer to do is actually build something that would be good for the town, beneficial for the town, hopefully keep those buildings and something that we get back on the bankroll. 20 units is not, you know, 21-bedroom units is not gonna be that much more space over there really. I don't know if, in anything, if you had any of the conceptual drawings that we had initially. I do have some. And again, they would just lay out schematics just to try and see what we, what we could do back then.
Thanks.
Thank you. It was really sort of packed and happy kind of stuff. We weren't.
Thanks, Scott.
We were never having intention that this would be what you had to do. This was conceptual. That we put out with the RFPs to say, well, this is kind of something that we think that maybe we can do. But again, it wasn't something that we ever had set in stone.
So Scott, you mentioned hazmat. I'm assuming there's asbestos in the buildings?
Yeah, there's asbestos. There's probably, you know, in the window, in the old windows in the cockpit, there's usually stuff in there as well. But there's definitely some asbestos. Overall, I don't think that, you know, is a super amount, but there's definitely some. And we have had, as a matter of fact, the fire station building committee back in 2019 did the survey at the North School because they believed that they were kicking that site around at that time. And that's where we got that original estimate. So the 2019 number is seven hundred thousand dollars plus for hazmat.
And what is it per parking per unit? What is it, one and a half spots per unit for a one-bedroom or?
Before it gets gone bad.
Is it one and a half now? Do you need at least 30 spots?
But there's more than enough.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
Significantly more asphalt than needed right now.
If I could just interject, based on the email we received from you today, you talked about the density ability of the project and, and the provision of the town is proposing of 20 years, we need about 70,000 square feet of space. And the requirement would be the first eight units have to meet up to 10,000 square feet. And then any unit after that would be 5,000 square feet. So it would be a total of 70,000 square feet of development if 12 units were to be developed. And both lots have more than 8,000 square feet on them. So you are in the density allocation based on what you quoted on your, your email today. So you're well within the density requirements of the, of the property to be developed up to six, up to 20 units. So I'm just using the notes that I have from you, but I then followed up with the law and that's true. That's, you're well within the rights to do that. So with the square footage that's available.
The parking question, one-bedroom units, 1.3 spaces each. So it'll be 26 total on either one of these buildings, if it was 21-bedroom units.
He would know. He knows it by heart.
Do we have more questions for Scott since he's up here right now?
I have another question for him. Is this gonna be subject to site plan review as well?
Alright, is there anyone else from the audience who would like to come up and speak on this matter? Please give us your name and address.
Ronald Howe, 149 Walnut Street. I'm just, yeah, like I said, like previous gentleman, I'm just questioning, you know, 30 units seems to be a lot and that includes a 1.8 megaspace for what? So that's like 24? No, no, 36.
36.
36 spaces or whatever. So, you know, and you'll need kind of, you know, spaces for visitors and then also room for dumpster or whatever. So that sounds like an awful lot of, I mean, spaces there because I mean, we're, the way it's set up now, there's not a lot of spaces, you know, in that side parking lot. You know, as you first come in. That plus, you know, I'm just concerned about the, you know, the extra units and just the density in that zone. It's an R30 zone, which is supposed to be single-family houses. We already have four other 24-unit apartment buildings. I think it's 24, 12-unit apartment buildings in the median area. And we also got 190-something units going right down the street. So. And I live right on the intersection of Summer and Walnut. So I mean, if you ever want to be scared, sit on the corner there in a lawn chair and see how many times you decide to jump out of the chair. So I mean, that much more traffic. I'm just, you know, very concerned about that. Really don't think this variance should be good.
Any questions for him?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the audience who want to come up? I want to acknowledge that we got an email from Kristen Thompson at 60 Summer Street who expressed concerns about, same one as the previous gentleman about impacts on traffic, especially at the Walnut-Summer Street intersection. But again, that's something that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we'll, you know, consider that when, you know, we have a developer who's going to site plan review. In the meantime, I think here, the concerns, I'll ask the police chief to step up some reinforcement and get a, one of the stops, one of the trailers down there that monitors some students and stuff. But yeah, we'll definitely address it as we go forward.
Thank you. I was gonna have to ask if there's any other input anybody wants to have from the audience. Come on up and let us know your name and address.
Hi, I'm Pam Howe, 149 Walnut Street. And I know the town manager was talking about, you know, putting out the RFPs. He got no interest. And, you know, was talking about developers coming in and maybe making offers or maybe not making any offers, but still, you know, wanting to, the town to have the, the properties developed. And I mean, does that mean that we would just give the developers, you know, the properties and just let them develop them? I mean, and not get any, any proceeds from it? If nobody, you know, comes forward and says, yes, we want to buy these and put 20 units in there, which again, you know, I was on the committee that was a part of having that study done and at that time, it was like a 12-unit maximum at Center School. Possibly maybe 16 at one point and then all of a sudden now it's 20 and, you know, so we're just gonna give the properties away? I mean, I'd rather have it done something else for the town, you know. So just wondering if that would be the case. If they just be given, you know, I think that should be taken into account too. And we don't, you know, we don't know what's gonna come about, you know, if you put another proposal out if there's no developer interested in it now. So just looking at it from a different angle. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So just to follow up on what Mrs. Howe said, is there a minimum price that you're gonna have?
There'll probably not be a minimum price. I don't, you know, again, I don't know how much interest this will get. I had some folks in Weymouth and actually some folks in Chicago that were looking and what they just found is it was too, just the remediation portion and the way current prices are for materials and labor, it just, the numbers weren't gonna work. So I don't know. I can't contemplate what will happen when the RFPs come in. I don't know, you know, what the offers will be. At that time, that'll be up to the board of selection to make a decision on if they want to go forward. If the, nothing comes in, I don't know what the next plan will be. I do know that we have to do everything we can. The selection have looked at this and, and just considering, you know, the fiscal issues that we have coming up in our next fiscal year. And going forward, it's just, you know, we're doing everything we can to not be sitting on the properties.
Thank you. So it's ultimately up to the board of selection? Does it have to go in front of town meeting?
It's already been in front of town meeting and put it up to the selection, if possible.
And is, is 20, is there a reason for 20? Is that why you think it'll be more likely?
Would be up to 20. And like I said, the plans that we did were conceptual, trying to not go outside the footprint of specifically Center School. North School definitely lends itself to probably a little bit more room. And I think honestly, in Center School, like I said, there's that large gymnasium area that takes up two floors and there's no reason that, you know, to think that somebody can't come in there and do something and get it up to 20 units. Typically, just from my past experience, and I think you folks have probably dealt with many developers, but some reason 20 is a magic number with them. So that's kind of what we went up to. We did, that doesn't mean that somebody will come in and do 20 if they look at that and say it's not worth their while, but they're still, they're going to go through site plan review. They'll have a chance for folks to come up and say, well, you are spreading it out too much. We don't want all that parking and we can work with them then.
So it should be up to 20. It's not necessarily 20, right?
Well, yeah, we would never force anybody. Somebody might want, if somebody gives us, you know, a great offer and says, I'm only gonna build 10 units here. We don't care. It's fine. As a matter of fact, I think a lot of people in this room will be happier. But we, what we're trying to do is make this as palatable as possible to potential developers without, and still taking the consideration. I mean, if I really wanted to sell it, I'd say 40 three-bedroom units. It'd probably go, but that's not what the town wants. We're, we're doing our best to try and follow through with, you know, the considerations of the neighborhood.
Why did you say one versus two-bedroom or mixed of one, two or three?
So initially, when we were looking at it, it's because we, we were trying to make them more attractive to a 55 and older. So initially, when we were looking at it, it's because we were trying to make them more attractive to a fifty-five and over, to a senior, to somebody who's looking to downsize, who won't necessarily, you know, be coming in where, where, you know, not that we're anti-kids, but we're trying to sort of either bring that, you know, somebody in who maybe wants to be near the train station and just needs a one-bedroom and starting out and then, you know, maybe moving on and reinvesting in the town, buying a house somewhere in town and staying here, to the person who's looking to sell that house and maybe downsize and stay in town. So we kind of wanted those two aspects, but not necessarily in between.
Next. Thank you. Anyone else wanna come up and speak on this matter? I guess I would, excuse me, entertain a motion to close both of these petitions for public discussion so that board can.
I had similar questions on North. I was just kind of.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay. For Scott?
Actually for Amy, I think.
I didn't realize that. Sorry.
No, that, that's not your fault. On the North School, Amy, just why is it that it's not a special permit if it's an R twenty versus the variance?
So the way, the way that, the way that the zoning bylaw is drafted, the under, just getting the section number here. Under thirty-two, under one seventy-five thirty-two, which allows for over twelve units for multifamily, and that's a special permit in the R twenty zoning district. Everything works out. So you have, it provides that it can be done by a special permit, the minimum lot size, it fits in the minimum lot size. It fits in the density, not a problem. I think it fits almost in the dimensional requirements. But we get down to E where it says, you know, building design placement where, you know, it says that this, you know, where the site adjoins single-family, the Board of Appeals may adjust building heights and side yards. And, you know, this is, this is a conversion slash reuse of an existing building. I don't think that, that section thirty-two was drafted to reuse an existing building. I think this is when somebody is gonna come in and build a new multifamily development, they come to you for a special permit. And that's when you can start, you know, working with them, I guess, is, you know, to say. Where here, you already have, for example, you already have parking, you already have, you know, you have a building, you already have screening. I guess it could be, it could be, you could grant a special permit for it. It's probably, I think, what the town manager's looking for is a variance because it's safer. Because with a variance, it's, we know that that building can then be turned into up to twenty-one bedroom units. Where with under thirty-two, reusing an existing building, it's just, we're putting a, what is it, a square peg in a circle? Round hole, yeah. So it's a little bit more difficult. But I think it is important to note on this, on this project that this could be done by special permit. So somebody, you know, somebody could, you know, take that parcel, tear down that school, tear it down and rebuild. So this one is a little bit definitely less, you know, with the derogation. This is definitely where you were going at.
So as part of the motion, should it be that the buildings have to stay in existence and the buildings have to be used?
Or the footprint, I guess.
So they could actually take the buildings down and then put up a new building?
I guess. Well, I'm not, you're only looking at the use. You're only looking at the use. You're not looking at the structure. The structure's pre-existing non-conforming, so they have every right to use that. So it would just be the use that you would be granting a variance on.
But you said earlier, the use of that building.
Correct.
Right. So does that building have to be?
Correct.
Can somebody come in and take it down and put it up? Or they have to use that building if what you cited before was?
So in, so that would only be a question in Center School.
Yep.
It would not be a question in North because they can come in, tear it down, put up a, under a special permit.
Yeah, so that's why I think you would take them.
So it would only be a question at first. It would only be.
Take them separately, obviously.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, you would have to. There's separate applications. But, yeah.
So for Center School, you gotta use the building?
Probably.
The North School, not, not so.
Or at least the footprint and the cube of the building.
They can get a special permit.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. So in light of what you just said, I think that we should, I would entertain a petition on the first application. To then close the discussion to the public. So we have a record of each app, or each petition separately.
Sure.
There's a petition to close that, the first one. I would entertain that.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Center School.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion. Seems to me like the town is in kind of a tough spot here where they'd like to see that, those buildings, this building reused. And it would have an impact on current conditions there where there's no use of that building. But, you know, inviting some additional net tax revenue in would be, you know, seems like a pretty good idea. Seems like the main concern that people have is any impact on traffic where we are now to later. And I don't know if that's a matter of local enforcement on some of those intersections or something else. But it's tough for us to impose that. Any other?
No, I mean, I appreciate the concerns that were raised by some of the residents, but I think hopefully a lot of these issues will be dealt with in site plan review that can remediate some of the concerns in terms of traffic patterns and things of that nature, lot coverage. And so, I mean, in terms of the use of the reuse of the structure, I don't consider it a substantial derogation to the existing use in the district, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the attorney a question? Of course. In the Center School, where as was presented as a whole lot, where the Washington Street access was, is part of the, but that will be separated before this goes through, correct, Scott?
Yes.
All right. So in the requesting the variance, do I include that the lower property would not be part of the approval of the, of this decision? Or do I not have to even worry about it?
You don't have to worry about it, but you could make it, it would be in the minutes. Most definitely, it would be in the minutes. Or you could say, you could state that it's, you know, that a motion to grant the use variance, you know, provided that the playground and entrance, I think, would be separated off of the property.
Okay.
Make that a condition.
Yeah, you can make it a condition.
The other condition I was worrying, wondering if I could use is up to, and including twenty units, but not, not just saying twenty units outright, if that's okay?
Yep.
That would be another condition I could set as part of this.
The motion could be for up to twenty.
Up to twenty units. Okay. Thank you.
And I think, I think your motion should include the existing building on Center School because.
Existing footprint, though, right? Because you might be doing something with the gym?
Is that at Center or North?
Center.
Oh, Center. Okay.
I think, if I understood correctly, the determination, the Center School would have to be physically used as part of the building structure, whereas the North School, because it's zoned differently, would qualify to be within the structure.
Just be the use, yeah.
Just be the use of the property itself.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further discussion on Center School? Anyone have a petition or, excuse me, a motion on this petition? I'll go if you will.
No.
The three conditions.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay.
On the petition of the Town of Abington for a variance under one seventy-five eighty-two D section three to convert the vacant school and multiple dwelling with up to twenty-one bedroom units, the property is located at sixty-five Thaxter Ave. And assesses map sixteen lot thirty-five with the medium density R thirty zone, also being known as the Center School, with the following conditions, that the existing school structure be included as part of the construction, that up to twenty units could be developed at the location. And the third would be that the lower end property will be split from the rest of the school before the sale of the existing Center School property would be part of this decision.
Playground and entrance.
The playground and entrance. Plainfield, I apologize. Thank you very much. The plainfield entrance would be excluded from the sale of this property. Okay, I apologize. You're right. There is one in the back. I forgot all about that, even though my son went there. Yeah, I apologize. That was a petition to approve. Petition to approve. All right. Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. On the.
I'll make a motion to close the North School petition for public hearing.
Second, please. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. North School, so my understanding is that we don't have to preserve that building necessarily.
Not necessarily, right.
It's only the use of the property that we have to.
I mean, in that one, they could come in for a special permit. So I would do, I would do, I would grant a variance for exactly what the previous one was, up to twenty-one bedroom.
But not place the condition of.
Right, the current building, right.
Any other discussion on that one? Again, we are talking about the use of the property, not the fiscal around the property or what's gonna happen on the streets. So I'm just, wanna make sure I'm clarified on that. So.
So if it, if it helps under one seventy-five seventy-seven, which is site plan review?
Yes.
Site plan review is required for a change of use. So without a doubt, they would need site plan review, in my opinion.
Okay.
So, and that would, you are correct, that would handle traffic and configuration, things like that.
Thank you very much for clarifying that for me. I appreciate that. I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions or discussion on North School? Again, I would entertain a petition on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition of the Town of Abington for a variance under one seventy-five eighty-two D three to convert the vacant school to a multi-unit dwelling of up to twenty-one bedroom units. The property is located at one seventy-one Adam Street on assessors map fifty-three, lot sixty-seven, in the high-density residential zone. Again, with the condition that it is up to twenty units, not necessarily twenty units.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good luck for anyone who participated in this. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Continued hearing of the petition of Sri Yumia LLC for special permits under one seventy-five dash twenty-one, H two and H five, to allow for open lot storage of transport trailers and commercial goods and materials. The property is located at three thirty-six Washington, Washington Street on assessors map sixteen lot nine in the general commercial, commercial G C zone. And let us know in what has happened since last time we saw you in this regard.
Good evening. Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street, representing property owner applicant. Mr. Patel is here, right there along. We've also, I'm Mr. Alex Brito from Brito Landscape. He's the tenant that we're speaking of, along with members of his family, I think, of course. And some other members, Mr. Patel's son, nephew, thank you, Raj, are here in case there's any other questions that come up that I'm not able to answer. But I did submit, if you recall at our last meeting, yes, at our last meeting, I checked the public records before the day of the hearing, and I found that there was some concerns that were put in writing with some of the neighbors. So I advised my client, I said, I think we should use this hearing September eleventh to listen to the neighbors and see what the issues were, what their concerns were. And then we could pretty much gather our thoughts and try to see what we can resolve, what can we address, what, what is, what is relative to the special permit hearing. And thus, we asked for the thirty days to try to work some things out and address some issues between then and now. And I know Raj has talked to a few of the neighbors. I bumped into one of the neighbors when I was over there at the property. And I put together something in writing to kind of summarize a lot of the things that have happened. And if you don't mind, I'd like to kind of write, read through as quickly as I can, just for the viewing public at home, for the neighbors here. So I wrote, "The applicant owner owns the real property, three thirty-six Washington Street, since two thousand and four, when they purchased the retail store and gas station from the Stone Family Realty Trust. After listening to the concerns of the neighbors that are hearing on September eleventh, the applicant owner has taken several steps to address and resolve the issues which are mentioned, some of which were not directly related to the requested special permits, but were nonetheless noted and reviewed. As the zoning board is aware, a special permit may be issued, quote, 'to authorize use which are not allowed, be allowed generally without restriction throughout any particular zoning district, but which, if controlled as the number, area, location, relation to the neighborhood and other characteristics, would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, morals, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity, or general welfare. A special permit may also impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time and use. Applicants are required to demonstrate that, quote, 'the requested use will not overload any public water, sewer, or drainage system, or any other municipal system, will not create traffic, undue traffic congestion, or unduly impair sightlines for traffic or hinder pedestrian safety to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or any other town, area in the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare.'" My apologies, I'm reading quickly. "We believe that the owner applicant and the tenant landscaping company can clearly demonstrate that the storage of trailers, which is one of the special permits, and the storage of landscaping materials, including a storage container, which is the second special permit, on this commercial property can and should be allowed as the property is situated within the general business zoning district, and these two uses, the storage of trailers and the storage of materials, A, will not and do not overload public water, sewer, or drainage; B, will not and do not create any undue traffic congestion on Route eighteen; C, will not and do not impair sightlines or impair pedestrian safety; and D, will not and do not create any undue health or safety hazards. In an effort to work with our vodas and the board, we would also agree to the inclusion of several conditions as part of the proposed approval of special permits, which we will describe below. The first issue was site lighting. We can confirm that all the lighting under the gasoline canopy and the wall packs in the retail store building are controlled by a timer, and they shut off at eleven P M. each evening. The only lights which remain overnight are security floodlights found in the national grid poles at the front or Route eighteen side of the property and the gas price sign, which is situated on the far side of the Route eighteen side of the building. This has been true for years, and the only time that some site lighting was left on late at night was when the property was being seal coated and re-lined after hours several months ago. For those at home, we're talking about the Route eighteen superstore on Bedford Street, which is also, this particular property is also known as three thirty-six Washington Street. Site traffic congestion. Brito Landscaping owns and operates seven trucks at most. Some are kept off-site. Typically, there are four or five trucks parked there overnight. Otherwise, landscaping trucks leave for work in the morning and they return at the end of the day. There's no noticeable volume of traffic or traffic congestion created at all from the landscaping company on the state highway. Please note, no special permit is required to allow landscaping trucks to be parked on this site. If the special permits for the work trailers for the landscaping material storage was denied for some reason, the tenant could still rent space to park trucks on, in this general business site. The elements to be reviewed for the requested special permits relate specifically to proposed storage of work trailers and the proposed storage of landscaping materials. The next issue was the overload, no overloading of municipal utilities. The storage of trailers and the storage of landscape materials will not overload public water, public sewer drain systems. They're just not connected to those. There's been no change in the elevations of dipography of the area to be used for the storage, which would be allowed by the special permit. It is a paved area, which is actually lower than the elevation of both King and Vernon Streets. Next is no impairment of sightlines and pedestrian safety. I'm just kind of going down the checklist in this special permit by law. If the special permits are granted, the trailers and commercial materials, which is gravel, mulch, patio blocks, et cetera, will be stored at the rear of the site as they are now. Thus, the requested uses will have no effect on sightlines along Route eighteen or on pedestrian safety. Please note, as I know, Mrs. Holbrook of three King Street had mentioned at the September eleventh meeting that she had tripped walking along the north side of the retail store building, that's the Vernon Street side. The town's recent reconstruction and repaving of Vernon Street with a Cape Cod berm left a six-to-eight-foot drop between the paved berm and the private circle land between the berm and the retail store building. There is no public sidewalk along the building on that south side of Vernon Street. Although this issue is not directly related to the storage of trailers or storage of materials on the opposite side of the property, the owner paid to have this strip away and paved at his expense, so he created a flatter, quote-unquote, "private sidewalk area" in this area. As a business owner at this location for twenty years, Mr. Patel strives to keep his customers safe whenever possible. Additionally, he paid to repair and upgrade the broken Vernon Street sidewalk in front of Mrs. Burton's home on twenty Vernon Street. Please note the photos below. Additionally, he paid to repair and upgrade the broken Vernon Street sidewalk in front of Mrs. Burton's home on 20 Vernon Street, please note the photos below, I submitted the photos of the before and after and Mrs. Burton's public sidewalk. The next item was smells and odors. The tenant has been renting the same space for about six to seven years, and the need for the request for this special permit came to the attention of the owner and the building permit after some tenant, I wrote tenant, some residents noticed a distinctive smell emanating from the rear of the property. The smell didn't exist every day, but it was prevalent during the summer months, it was determined that a stockpile of grass clippings and leaves was causing the smell, and the pile was immediately removed within two hours after the owner and tenant made aware of it. If this special permit is agreed, we have no objection to any condition or to a condition which would prohibit the future stockpiling of grass clippings, leaves, or similar organic debris anywhere on the property. It won't happen, again, not allowed. Next item is noise. At tip of the day of operations, we see the employees arrive at, arrive at the site and leave with the landscaping trucks and trailers between 7:00 AM to 7:30 AM in the morning, and they typically return sometime before 8:00 PM sunset, earlier than that during different times of years. The areas are vacated and the trucks, trailers, and commercial materials are left in place over, overnight each night. One neighbor claimed that there was small engine noise coming from the property approximately 4:48 on one morning in particular. We don't know where the source of the reason for anyone to be on the site at that early hour, they certainly weren't doing landscaping, because before sunrise, but we have no objection, again, if there is a condition included in the grant of special permits, should you so choose, that would prohibit the starting or use of any small engines or large trucks before 7:00 AM on weekdays, or before 9:00 AM on weekdays, with the exception of the noise created during snow removal operations. All of those limits are in accordance with the Abington Noise Regulations promulgated by the Board of Health. I'd like to note for the record that the Abington Noise Regulations apply throughout our town during the hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekends and holidays. However, noise regulations, the noise regulations, do not prohibit noise in general. The truck idling restrictions, which was brought up, is mentioned in Section 6B of these regulations, but they only apply to larger trucks in excess of 10,000 pounds gross vehicle weight, and if those trucks are idling for more than five minutes, and if they are parked on residential premises or on a public way of adding a residential premises. The truck idling restrictions do not apply to trucks parked at 336, which is a commercial property. A copy of the noise regulations is being submitted as part of my presentation, I submitted one to Nick, I did bring extra copies with me today. Nevertheless, in consideration of nearby residences, uh, there may be a state law that applies, but our owner and tenant will continue to use their best efforts to limit any unnecessary idling of any large vehicles, and will continue to require their employees to restrict any idling of any vehicles at all times for no more than five minutes. We don't have any large, large vehicles, they're mostly larger pickup trucks, and I did bring some photos to show you that. Please also note that noise below 55 decibels is not a violation of the Abington Noise Regulations, see Table 1 of the regulations. Commercial snow plowing activities are exempted from noise regulations, and the use of leaf blowers to clean our site is allowed as long as the work is done between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM on weekdays, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekends, which is true for every single property in town. The next issue was leaves and fencing. Mrs. Trot from 23 King Street complained that the leaves from the trees in our site were blowing into her yard, and her husband had suggested that we just cut down all the deciduous trees along the rear lot line which abuts King Street. The owner has cut back the bulk of the tree limbs which are closest to King Street, but we would not agree that the removal of all of the trees would be wise. The trees serve and provide several benefits. During the summertime, the leaves of the trees help provide a visual and sound buffer to any activities at the rear of the property. The summertime is obviously when the landscaping company would be most active. We know of no other hearing which the zoning board required the removal of trees, presumably due to the same beneficial reasons I just stated. While we understand the frustrations of the Trotts of having to rake their lawn free of, quote, "other people's leaves," each fall here in this, uh, which fall here, uh, in New England, we cannot control where autumn's leaves may blow. We cannot be blamed for the leaves which may find their way onto the Trot's property, I'm sorry. There is two large trees next door to the Trot's house also, and I submitted a copy of that photo. However, in order to work this out, um, in good faith from Mr. Patel, we would agree to a condition in the special permit that says the owner would be responsible to ensure that the area along King Street, which abuts 336 Washington Street, will be raked and cleaned of debris at least once every two weeks between September 1st and December 31st of each year while that landscaping company remains as a tenant. And then, there's the photos to show you, the trees on the left and the trees on the right. A chain link fence has been present along King, uh, King Street for over fifty years, and the owner is willing to hire a professional fence company to install a new solid fence along Ken Street, King Street. This fence will provide additional sound and sight buffering, and will be more attractive than the fencing which is currently present. We've enclosed copies of some of the cost estimates we've received to date from interest in fence companies, and we would suggest an inclusion of another condition that the owner would agree will be required, to install a six-foot tall solid fence along King Street within thirty days after the expiration of any appeal period, or sooner if he chooses. And I did attach copies of two of the estimates we've received this far, so you know that that has been done. As a reminder, the requested special permits are required in order to allow open lot storage of the trailers, the work trailers, and the, uh, storage container, and the open lot storage of landscaping materials. The approvals of these special permits will not change the fact that leaves are gonna fall off the deciduous trees each autumn, and there's no causal relation to justify the denial of the special permit based on leaves or leaf raking. However, and I don't mean to be cute with that, but I have to make that point. However, as a compromise, we are offering the above condition, that we would clean and rake along King Street as a means to responsibly alleviate some of our neighbors' concerns. Pest control was mentioned. One neighbor alleged that the presence of trailers and the storage of commercial materials was causing an increase in rodent activity in the neighborhood. We dispute that correlation, because we know that the town has seen a general rise in rat population throughout all sections of town and beyond our town, if you just watch some of the selectmen's meeting and Board of Health meetings, you'll know what I mean. We would like to report, however, just so you know, that the owner has retained a company called A1 Exterminators that, to perform increased levels of rodent and pest management on this property, they will be there twice monthly, um, to take care and to set updates on our property. The next thing, there was an issue about, a question about if, was there any sort of previous reuse restriction that was put in effect by any previous zoning or planning decision, especially when Mr. Stone at the gas station approved. It was mentioned during the initial hearing that one or two of the neighbors believed, but they weren't certain that a use restriction was placed on the rear portion of the owner's property back when the previous owner obtained the required permits to open a gas station. After reviewing all the records of the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board, no such restriction was discussed or, or is in place. I believe the building inspector also reviewed the same documents, I won't speak for him, but I think it appeared the same conclusion. Mr. Raj Patel has owned this property and operated his business here for over twenty years, and he values the relationship he has with his customers and his neighbors. Several neighbors testified that they enjoyed long-term friendly relationships with him, and they are regular customers of his business. Mr. Alex Brito of Brito's Landscaping has been living and working in Abington for the last seven years, and he lives across the street from this property. This is how much it means to him, his kids go to our Abington schools, he lives in Abington, and he works here in Abington, and he doesn't want his business to be closed in Abington. Mr. Patel and Mr. Brito are committed to being good neighbors and be responding to any reasonable requests that may arise in the future. The open lot storage of materials and trailers will not create any nuisances, but we understand that the general business activity on a site that is adjacent to residential properties requires more scrutiny and review. We understand that the concerns of neighbors must be balanced with the right of, to operate a business on a property located within the general business zoning district. Thus, we would propose the following listed conditions to be incorporated into the decision to approve the requested special permits, as they will provide elevated levels of protection and benefits for the neighbors and for the owner. I listed six proposed conditions for your consideration, which I mentioned, but I'll review them quickly. One, all lighting, as the gasoline canopy and the wall packs on the south side of the building will be turned off at 11:00 PM each evening unless there's seal coating or parking lot painting in progress after hours. Number two, no stockpile of grass clippings, leaves, or similar organic debris will be allowed anywhere in the locus at any time. Number three, there'll be no starting or use of any small engines or large trucks before 7:00 AM on weekends, before 9:00 AM, uh, on weekdays, with the exception of snow removal operations, excuse me. Number four, the owner shall install a six-foot tall solid fence along King Street within thirty days after the expiration of repeal period or sooner. Number five, the owner shall be responsible to ensure that the area along King Street, which abuts 336 Washington Street, shall be raked and cleaned free of leaves and debris at least once every two weeks between September 1st and, and December 31st of each year while the landscaping company remains as a tenant. And the reason I said September 1st and December 31st, because that's when the leaves fall. Um, and number six, a special permit will limit the number of trailers to more, no more than four trailers and to allow one lockable storage container. The owner applicant respectfully requested the zoning board vote to approve the requested special permits, and we look forward to meeting, so we can review these proposals with your board. Thank you for bearing with me, and thank you to the neighbors for listening. I also wanted to add, there were two neighbors who couldn't be here with us tonight, Amy, if I can indulge you, this is one letter, or the second? The first letter is a letter from Mr. Paul McDonald, 23 Vernon Street. My name is Paul McDonald, and I live at 23 Vernon Street, Abington, I'm writing a statement in support of Raj and Brito...
Bless you.
Brito's Landscaping Company, which currently rents space on Raj's property at Route 18. I have, he refers to Raj as Raj in this letter, I'm gonna read it as he wrote it. "I have lived in this neighborhood for over two decades and have never had any issues or concerns with Brito's Landscaping's presence on Raj's property. The business is well-managed, professional, keeps the area clean and orderly, I, I fully support Raj continuing to allow Brito Landscaping Company to operate in this property, as both Raj and the company have been positive, respectful neighbors who add value to our community. I've also known Raj personally and has a business owner for more than twenty years, and in that time, his property and business have always been well-maintained and a positive presence in Abington. Raj is an honest, kind, and generous man. During a difficult period in my life, he kindly extended me credit at his store, so I could purchase what my family needed and pay him back when I was able. That act of trust and compassion meant a great deal to me. I have raised four children here in Abington, and over the years, Raj has always treated them with respect and kindness. As customers, we've always found him and his employees to be professional, courteous, and community-minded. For over twenty years, Raj has been more than just a business owner, he has been a valued part of our town. His integrity, work ethic, and commitment to, uh, to fairness make him an asset to our community. Sincerely, Paul McDonald of 23 Vernon Street." The second letter is from Mr. Dan Eddy of 37 Vernon Street. "Dear Zoning Board, I'm writing this letter in support of Raj and the rest of the Route 18 Superstore team. My home is located approximately a hundred feet from the corner of the Route 18 Superstore and a hundred and fifty feet from the backside of Brito's Landscaping. My family, my family and I have resided at this address for more than six years, and we visit Route 18 Superstore multiple times each week, which, as I write this, might be too often. I also had Brito's Landscaping do some maintenance, lawn maintenance work a few years back. Every interaction that I may have had, that I ever had with Raj or his employees in Brito have been extremely pleasant. I have observed early morning activity during the week in the Brito's Landscaping area, but it has always been after 07:00, which may feel too early to folks living nearby, but it's in accordance with the bylaws. Recently, I have observed a mural and sidewalk repairs conducted on the Vernon Street side of the Route 18 Superstore, these upgrades are very much welcomed. I do not have all the details regarding complaints from neighbors over town, but from my perspective, as another neighbor, Route 18 Superstore and Brito's folks are local business owners who support this town through their good services and taxes. Having spent four years recently with the fire department, I am aware that this town should not be punishing or pushing away successful businesses. Hopefully, the board will take this into, take into the consideration the amount of effort taken by Raj to mitigate and solve, uh, all of the complaints of neighbors who may be physically closer to their lot than mine. Sincerely, Dan Eddy." I'd like to thank Mr. Eddy and Mr. McDonald for taking the time to write that. And finally, just, I would envision that many of you have already been to the site or driven by, but if you could, I wanted to, sorry, I don't know how many I have these.
I have like a four here, Sean.
Alright, thank you.
So that should do it.
That should do it.
I just wanted to show you in, I don't know, but at least here. So the photos I submitted, just on the first page, just in case you haven't been on the property, um, those are the type of trucks that are parked on the property at the first page. Basically, you know, your Ford 350s or, kind of pickup trucks, do not what you'd see at a construction site. And you can see the work trailers that we talked about, the special permit would allow those trailers that you see in the back of the photo. Also, at one point, at the last meeting, it was claimed that, um, tailgates from large dump trucks were slamming and were loud. We don't own any of those trucks, and the only truck that has a gate is the swinging gate, which you see on the front page there. Yes, when the, when the mulch or gravel gets delivered, it may be a dump truck comes in and does swing gate, but you're talking deliveries of mulch now, once or twice a month during mulch months, you know, during the summer, so it's not an everyday occurrence. And we apologize if that, those instances bother others. The second page just shows where the outdoor storage of materials, that some of the materials of the patio blocks, the bricks and such, there's also the bins to the right of that, it's not shown in the photo here, um, but it has the mulch, gravel, sand. And, and again, I noted, the special permit for the outdoor, open lot storage of materials for commercial purposes would not have any smell or odor, no drainage issues, no water sewer effects, no increase in traffic, there's no smell from those issues. We, we've addressed the smell issue by saying there'll be no stockpile of grass clippings, lawn, uh, leaves, and debris. Uh, page three is just another same picture I think you saw earlier, of the view on King Street of the trees on the left and the right, as is page four, um, just similar photos of the trees. I think, um, the leaf issue is not really pertinent to grant of the special permit, because we're asking for, does a trailer, um, it doesn't affect whether the leaves are gonna fall on your special permit. Same thing with the storage of gravel or patio blocks. And then the last page just reviews some of the other improvements that were done, not really part of this special permit, but they were brought up at the last hearing, and in good faith, Raj wanted me to show those to you, that he's been doing what he can, has been meeting with some of the neighbors to discuss. Again, we, we are in a business district, and we do respect and understand that we have residents living next to us, so we need to listen and address what we can. I hope my mural and these photos show you that Raj is a considerate and serious person, that he would do whatever he can to make things right if he, when he hears of these. Same thing with Mr. Brito, and it was his idea that said he'll go out and he'll clean the street, uh, on King Street, um, and he will do that. I think, in total, we have done our best to try to address everything that came up. I'm sure there's more comments that will come tonight, and we're happy to try to address those as they come tonight, I can see John right behind me. So, uh, if, unless you have any immediate questions of me right now, I'd like to step aside and let some of the neighbors bring up any comments, sir.
Just a couple clarification questions. Has the, the yard waste been removed that people were complaining about, or will that be done by a time certain?
No, it's gone.
Okay. And the definition of mulch, is that commercially available mulch?
No, there's no retail...
Or, or ground up trees?
Great question, no retail sales come out of this property. So those, the, his storage bins are only six feet high, two blocks high, so this is not a Home Depot or Pierce construction where they have these huge piles. Um, it's for their, for Brito Landscaping's use, when they take it, they'll take it off-site and do a job. Some of their larger projects, the mulch will get, or whatever the materials gets delivered to the site, but this is stuff that they need for, you know, smaller jobs or whatnot, they can go back one of their pickup trucks at all.
And one other question, I don't know if it's even pertinent or not, that has to do with, um, what constitutes yard waste? Because like, some landscaping, landscaping companies take down trees and they have, you know, firewood that they store for sale, it's not waste per se, it's something they would, they could sell. There's no retail sales from there, I guess you said, but will there be any, you know, storage of any, you know, detritus from trees?
Yeah, I said, in my phraseology, I said, grass, grass clippings, leaves, or, uh, organic waste, I believe is what I said.
Okay.
If you want to consider...
I just wanna make sure, clear on that, that there's none of that stuff...
We understand, that was what brought us here, was the smell caused by the organic waste, was, you know, innocently done, they piled some, what happens is when they do a job, and they, they put their, you know, their mole on, and they clean out gardens, whatever, they put stuff in the back of the truck. The places that they, that accept that, uh, deliveries will sometimes close, was it at four o'clock? Where's, Alex, at four o'clock, so if their, if their group doesn't, if their, um, team doesn't get off the site into the dumping area by four, they would need to do something else, you know, they...
That's like an overnight storage thing, right, they'd leave it in the trailer overnight?
Exactly, we cannot, our condition is we will not stockpile anything on, on the site, because that's when the sun gets to it, the rain gets to it, and then it starts to compost, it breaks down. So, that will never happen again, and if, if you put that condition in a special permit, that gives the building inspector the right to shut them down if that's violated.
Just wanna make sure I'm clear, what, what is defined as what here, so that, I tried to address the neighbors' concerns, because they dealt quite a few. And, and, you know, and I appreciate that you brought... And, you know, and I appreciate that you brought this forward. How much of this has been shared with the neighbors prior to today?
What I wrote?
Yeah.
Only, I submitted it to you yesterday because I was trying to gather everything.
Yeah, okay.
I think some of the neighbors, I know Raj has talked to Mrs. Burton, have been over at her property and did some clearing, but I won't let her speak for herself what her concerns are. We were out there looking at the fence line and Mr. Trot came out and joined us and we were talking about the tree limbs that go down. And like I said, he wanted all the trees to come down. And I said, I don't think we can agree on that. This board orders it, but I don't think that would be a wise move. No disrespect.
Okay. Alright, well, that's, I just wanted to get a few things clarified in my mind about that. Do we have any other questions for Sean to start with here?
In observing the property, when you drive down to the lower platform, all of the mulch and sand is stored at the back of the property, it's been residential property. As opposed to the half wall, which is on the other side of the down ramp where then it goes over to the loading dock and then the trailer? Is there any plausible reason why that couldn't be moved to there so that the excavating of that wouldn't be right on the residential property as opposed to having it on this side?
I don't know that there would be a difficulty in doing that. I don't know that its location though causes any sort of significant issues because again, gravel and such doesn't really create the smell. And there is no house behind our property. The street is behind our property and this house.
Directly behind your property is just street, there's no housing at all.
Correct. So by the end of this, there'll be a solid wall instead of the fence.
Well, I didn't walk through the, I didn't walk through the trees, so I apologize for making that statement.
Well, I think, I showed a picture in there if you want to follow.
I didn't walk through the trees. My concern was that having worked with bulk mulch, I can get a smell off bulk mulch.
Yeah.
Especially if it's cedar or if it's, if it's not the quality of bulk mulch that some, some companies offer. So I was thinking that for the benefit of the neighbors, if that pile was removed from the edge of the street as opposed to being up against that half wall, that half wall would separate that and give it more space to breathe out before it became a smelling issue. Granted, sand and gravel do not have any scent at all, there's just sand and gravel, but you are using some type of machine to excavate that and put it in the back of the truck to take it to the site.
Scoop it up, right.
If that noise was taken 30 feet farther away, would that help the residential neighborhood? I don't know, I'm just bringing it up as a plausible petition to look at as a possible solution to some other issues that maybe some other people have.
Just, no, it's a good point.
I just, that's something I looked at when I went down and walked the property. I did walk the property on purpose. And I wanted to see how all this was laid out and all of that just stayed up. And that, that it is a half wall with a people from the Restaurant Park Act and then there's the loading dock and then there's the portable office space that is currently there. I just thought there was a plausibility since all the construction materials over here that if we could move this stuff over to this side, maybe that would help.
I don't think there's anything that would prevent us from doing that.
I'm just, I'm not making it a statement, I'm just pointing out a plausible. My apologies for making that statement residential, I thought there was houses behind that.
No, but it's a residential school. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Sean?
Not at this moment.
Alright, I would like to invite anyone from the audience to come up and just tell us your name and address and you think this is progress and.
Progress, I got my teeth.
Me too.
John Trot, 23 King Street. Sean, you're good. We just spent maybe 45 minutes out of that hour and 15 minutes not focusing on what I'm really concerned about. This is just a letter from one of the neighbors that didn't make it. Every other, those third letters that Sean provided, I have to reflect upon this. We are, what we go through is incredible and I'm focusing on the storage of equipment and materials. We fought this fight 20 years ago. I found out through Nick, we didn't get what we thought we got. We were told we got it, we can sit here and go over it. I'm just gonna read what I have prepared and then allow the neighbors. He's so good and he could make Donald look like he had a eating disorder. Alright, my name is John Trot, I live at 23 King Street. Thank you for your time, your service is important, just like the town manager said, I know you're volunteering your time, thank you. Our goal here initially was to have you enforce the decision that was made when the gas station went in. No business in the back is a buffer zone. I learned from Nick, it was not entered. Can we access the minutes, we'll go over that. But the omission of those recorded minutes in the buffer zone, and it was discussed, it wasn't recorded, it was discussed, should not overrule the recollection of over nine individuals with 150 years of residency on that street with no history of complaining, okay? We're just, we did this 20 years ago, okay? We allowed the gas station to go in. We were told that we would be at peace because I don't know if it's a town aquifer or it's called a wetland, but it comes right by there. And our concern is the leaching. You know, anything to happen near us, a construction company is wrong, okay? We, your predecessors promised us, okay? And it just, from a reason, it didn't get in there. The reason we're here tonight, after years of complaints by the neighbors, to Raj, Brito and every town department we could think of, it came to late, they never pulled any permits. When you operate a business, the onus is on you to look into requirements before you proceed with anything. I was a businessman, not a good one. They are actually, they are actually making your job easier, I think you can agree. You usually make your decisions based on, you know, the applicable ordinances and then you hope for adherence. You can go on history here, okay? There's no adherence to these ordinances. Nick has seen numerous videos, he's seen our pictures, it was disgusting. That area needs to be protected. Trump and a construction company is not protecting it. I'm not exactly sure what is categorized, I'm reading what I just said. We should all know about the concerns about leaching in that area, okay? A previous tenant, owner at 15, 23, at 23, at 15 King Street said, John, they were worried about fire, they were worried about health. My neighbors are gonna get up here and talk about the health, okay? They're angry, they feel neglected, they're unprotected, they're unrepresented. As far as the work that the store is doing now, long overdue. The store exterior, if we ever had a fast thing, wasn't I saw before all of this. In a short time, much has changed, but it has no bearing on your decision on whether to store equipment above an area that could leak into town water. It's an aquifer, we got all the ledges going down there. Don't dispute most of, everything Sean said, but this is what we fought for and now it has just been ignored. It has no, okay? As far as the work. Clear with me, please. There should be no storage of equipment and materials. To get back on point, you cannot pass this permit to store equipment and material, not there. Who's gonna regulate it and how often? We're talking about two types of material storage here. Temporary, like transfer, like he, bros the subject, what happens is these cars come in there and the hard workers, they get in their vehicles, they go to their job, they come back, that vehicle, they have to be ready to go to that job the next day so they offload, okay? They're not scientists, they're workers. They're gonna offload, okay? And as far as the storage for the materials, how much storage? Are we gonna have 24 foot mounds? How wide across? How, what are the parameters? Who's gonna enforce the parameters? Do we watch what they offload every night? I mean, we're opening ourselves up to just another 20 years of just, you know, have there be a night watchman? It doesn't belong there, there are numerous other places. I could even help Alex find a place, I mean, I was in the field. Tonight, the only acceptable vote is no, okay? If you go to continuance, we're gonna get a lawyer, I think I might hire Sean, okay? Like I said, we've lived here for over 150 years, we're not gonna back down. You cannot have a construction company with dump trucks backing load. He made it sound very innocuous, okay? He's good, he is very good, okay? But please, protect our community. Sean said it when he took this case from them. Just because it's general commercial doesn't mean it's automatic. You have to fit into the neighborhood and into the town parameters and what's going on with that water. Thank you, if I sprayed or if I didn't make any expense, my wife can interpret for me. It just doesn't belong there, we thought we did this 20 years ago.
Thank you, I appreciate you and your passion here. We can't address everything because, you know, rules are set in place, we have, you know, we don't want to be taken to court either.
Totally understood.
Do we have any other questions for John right now? I do not.
I got two things to what he said. One, Liz and Nancy helped me get the select board and planning board minutes from the There was nothing about the back lot, the site plan.
It's probably some wrong, but on the selectmen, for the selectmen, they voted to have 54 parking spaces on the property? That's all they voted on? If I read that correctly.
I'm looking at the site plan from back then, I see 55.
Fifty, I apologize, 55.
That back lot, the spots right there, proposed 9x18 low intensity used parking space is really the only reference I could find.
That's the only reference of the property.
To that area, it's just low intensity parking spaces.
On the town map, is there anything shown for the need to protect?
So I do also have, that's the other thing to what John was saying, I brought the wetlands overly district map. This is a hand drawn map that we're still using. From, I think in the 70s it was drawn. So the paper copy is our best copy, unfortunately. If anyone wants to take a look too, you're welcome.
Please feel free, feel free to come up, we don't, we don't bite.
So right in here, so here's Vernon, here's King, here's Maple. So it's kinda right on the line here. I brought, this doesn't have lot lines. So I also brought this to hopefully help you place it. We have got Maple, Vernon, King, so there's two houses and then the gas station we're talking about in this block here.
Quick interjection and observation I made on the September 11th meeting, there was a previous one that took up in the conservation. We all talked about these lines, how they douche.
Waver.
Waver, okay? Jerry Hughes, the guy at 15 King Street, which is the second house in, and the spring water runs right down, he said, went right through the bottom of his basement, he actually, you know, harnessed it and just diverted it, you know, which is, water's a powerful thing, you know? But that town aquifer, or that wetland, that little park right there, is probably up another 30, 40 feet, you know, we can't expect the town to, you know, know all that anyways, but common sense, I heard it early, let's pull it out every once in a while, you know? No one doesn't want him to make a business. He can rip that out to, you know, maybe the water will kill him right now. Hot guys, you know, but it has to be innocuous because the vacuum is as strong as it's out and it's no.
The way of all of this.
Yeah.
There is a drain right there. Okay, thank you. So, yeah. Alright, well, thank you, Nick. John, again, thank you, appreciate that. You said you would like to come up next, please let us know who you are and you were here last time.
Denise Trot, 23 King Street. I just had two comments I wanted to make, maybe turn into three. One is I'm an educated person, I'm well aware that the wind does blow leaves around when they fall from trees. I did submit pictures to the board, I don't know if you plan on posting those for everyone to see.
I have pictures from her that I can get up here if the board wants them.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep, there's about 30 pictures. But one of the pictures is a dump truck filled to the top with leaves, the tarp is not on, stacked up to the fence, and those are the leaves that blow all over my yard. Not from the trees and the wind and mother of nature, those are the leaves and debris that I'm throwing too. The other debris that I'm, there's some, well, that's trash, but yeah, if you could, there's one, the truck is higher than the fence and filled with leaves, also left to sit there for days and blow all over my yard. My other comment that I would like to make is that, that's my front lawn.
Yeah, what, could you just maybe narrate the pictures for us first?
Sure, absolutely, would love to. Okay, so this is in my letter that I wrote about them working on a truck. It's a dump truck, the bed of the dump truck is up. Different cars came in different days and I have hundreds of pictures and videos and unfortunately, I'm still not able to compress the videos to get them to you, but I'm gonna continue to work on that. So not only did they work on the vehicle and they threw like transmission bottles or whatever chemicals they were using, but it also shows you the giant tree stumps that are there, the overgrowth, the trash, a pile of dirt that it's not clean loom, it is brought in from elsewhere and they just dump, dump it. So that's that picture.
When were these pictures taken?
Between 2000 and, what year is this? I can't even think. Like 2000 and, 2020 to current. This is dirt that they bring in from whatever, has trash in it. That blue house, that's my house. It's not directly on the other side of the fence, it's across the street from the fence. So we have that lovely debris. This is what you get to see from the fence, all kinds of trash, plastic buckets. That's okay. This is more, you can see the container down here, I don't know if you can see, I think this is antifreeze or some chemical in a bottle, more plastic bottles, trash, tree stumps, and I can tell you more dirty dirt, but when they dump it, the noise, my house actually shakes, I'm not exaggerating, but my house shake, shook. There's more, I'm talking about a fire hazard, oh, and there's a big yellow construction truck, that looks a little bit bigger than the equipment they're talking about. But in between those two pieces of equipment, there's more twigs, tree stumps, branches that they dump. There's the truck with the leaves. So here's the fence. Here's the dump truck, filled with leaves, left to blow all over my apartment, yeah, because I'm parked with behind it, not by the nature of the trees. That's prettiness that you get to look at before they put up my, so I call it their revenge fence, which is a real thing. More trash. One of the videos shows a dump truck backing up, and I am gonna get these videos to the town. And two of his workers are throwing a plastic chair off, they're throwing pallets off, bags of trash. I don't know if they empty apartments, a mattress, hockey nets, bicycles. That yellow thing under that tarp, that is where they keep the sand. One of my videos shows a bunch of trucks lined up being filled with sand, you know, so the snow, they can sand. I know they said they don't do snow plowing and removal, but that's where they store the sand and my video shows them loading up trucks so that they can go sand. There's the yellow tent, before it was covering the sand, it used to blow up, sometimes almost over the fence, then you can see part of the revenge fence crooked, falling down. Here's one of their workers, multiple pictures, multiple days, dumping stuff. That used to be pretty flat, now there's a hill back there. Equipment, but also to the right of the equipment, you can see more dirty dirt and also behind the truck, you can see pallets, they would just leave them there, concerned for fire More trash pictures, sorry, chemicals, it's very pretty. This is on the street side of the fence. A couple of times, I actually called and asked to have the street cleaners come because I have other pictures where that's almost completely covered, has trash, has gloves. The bag of, that is a bag of dog doo doo in it. I have pictures, there's a dog, a person would walk on the other side of the fence all the time and then throw the bags with the poop over, so there's pictures of that. I mean, more trash, like that's not a fire hazard. All kinds of fencing and whatnot. This is the revenge fence, that's Freddie. Snow plowing and removal, I know they don't do it, but there's the advertisement for that. Just, that's the overgrowth to the right of that, in the corner is the store, you can see trash, Nestle's milk chocolate. Screening, you know, a big pile of screen there, those cinder blocks, non-cinder blocks, I don't know what you call the barrier things.
Correct.
More trash, and this is the cut through that somebody referenced at the last meeting, people going in and out. In my letter, I mentioned how a couple of different police officers at different times have approached different neighbors and at one time, we were told to be very careful that there's needles over there when you cut through, but that just gives you an example of the trash that would blow from the lot, that they blow from the lot with their industrial sized leaf blowers. But that just gives you an example of the trash that would blow from the lot, that they blow from the lot with their industrial sized leaf blowers. And there's my house. More debris, you can tell it's a different time, different season, there's my inflatable on the ground, Santa. All the trash and who knows what else. And then they cover up, so if you dug in there. I put this picture in because this dump truck here is filled with stuff that they're going to dump. And you can see tires, and all this stuff that's in here, metal, wood, and so forth, they dump along the fence. And that's what contributes to those piles that make such a mess. Fire hazard vehicles. Uh, this was, so you could see to the left, there's all that dirty dirt, whatever, wherever that came from. Then all these crushed rocks, and they're not tiny, good sized boulders, boom, boom, dump that. This picture I included to show that they leave the dumpster open, I know that there's a rat problem throughout the town, but we have literally asked, could you please close the dumpster, could you please keep the dumpsters closed? There's dumpsters left open. Doesn't help the problem.
I think that's the end of what I have.
Okay. And my other comment is that I feel that all of this is being done because you want something. You've had ample opportunity, we've approached you and tried to address these issues, and talk to you about our concerns. And it's like the twelfth hour, and now because you need to apply for this variance or special permit, now you're doing all these things, because my question to you would be, if we weren't here, and you weren't requesting this permit, or variance, or whatever, could you be doing any of this cleanup? And I know in my heart of hearts, no, you would not. You haven't made an attempt to, to do anything for the entire time that you're there, other than to ridicule us and ignore us when we try to speak to you. And, and be neighborly, and work together, and be cooperative. You've had that opportunity multiple times, and you didn't take advantage of it. That's it, that's what I have.
Do we have any questions for her?
I do not.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other people, welcome up and speak. Please let us know your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kathy Burton, and I'm in a butter.
What is your address, so that it's for the record?
Everything that Denise had just said.
You have a address?
I have in bylaws, in the bylaws of Abington, Massachusetts.
Say, why don't you write a dress, Kathy?
Oh, twenty, twenty Vernon Street, Abington, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I'm in a butter. I'm deaf, so.
What's your?
Um, I have paperwork for Abi, the town of Abington, for a butter's, I'm sorry. I get a little nervous, I haven't spoken for a long time, in high school, actually.
A couple of years ago, huh?
Every. Everything that Denise has just said. I have the information on a butter's and the code, and bylaws of Abington. And codes, right here, I'd just like to give it to you when I'm done. Yeah, it is getting better, I believe, I have been speaking to Raj, and he has been concerned with the fact that I'm an older woman and I live alone, he said, and he's been trying to help me. He has done some very nice things. He has taken branches and cut them down. I had requested him to do that a couple of years ago, because it was affecting my apartment. He has recently just done that, and it has saved me a lot of problems. I needed to have it done a while before, but he's, he's done it now. He has put a little cement sidewalk in front of my house, so it's safer. And he requested that, he asked me if it was all right, and I said, yes, it was okay. He is, I think, making an effort. I would really like to see all of this stay and not go down, I would like this all to be continued. And I had, oh, and the rats, I understand that there's a terrible rat problem in all the towns around. Mine is very bad, and I think it's because a lot of it is to the store. Raj has paid to have rat control around my house alone, no one else's. Which is nice, I'll give him that, that's nice. I think he's making an effort, and he's trying. Um, the situation really has to get a lot better, it really does. Everybody's quite concerned over the years and the years and years that we've been trying to deal with this problem. I am a landlady, and I recently rented my apartment, it had been vacant for a while. I had a difficult time doing that, because it was just renovated, it's all been completely done, and it's a brand new apartment, actually. And my tenants will look, and they'll say, they'll look out, and I've got a great big porch, and it's got nine windows, and to look out, you've got the view, and it's not so nice. And this is what's caused a problem. I had people that wanted to pay me a year upfront. As a widow, and living in these times alone, I was thrilled that would have solved my problem. The question they asked my realtor was, is it going to be, is it loud here? And the real, my realtor said, well, I have to ask Kathy, Kathy, and the people never came back. I have had it rented to very, to very nice people, but it's been a chore. They also have told me that when they look out the window, they've only been here since October first, that they see rats running around. And I, you know, was surprised to hear that. I think eventually, the rat problem, for me, for a while, will be taken care of, but it really is a bad one, I bet it beats holes all over my backyard. So, I'm not going to go through all the complaints that I've had, I've given you all the information the first time I came. And it's a little bit more than my, my neighbors, only because I'm in a butter and I'm so close. So that's just about it, I'm going to let it go, I'm going to give this to you, and maybe you can find it useful.
Thank you.
This is, the only mistake I made was the name of this, of this store, and I made it, I corrected it.
All right, thank you so much. Does anybody have questions for her?
No.
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, other people would like to come up and speak? Please let us know your name and address.
Hello, my name's Carl Tidelbaum, I live at forty King Street. I am not, I'm across the street from John, but I'm two doors down on the same side as the superstore. So that whole back part of the lot is just one house over from me, and there's no house next to me, it's all trees. So I can, if I look out my window, I can, I can see into the back of the lot. I moved to King Street eight years ago. And it was pleasant for a while, and it's still very pleasant, the neighbors make it pleasant. But about two, three years ago, I, I think it's when Britta actually came in there. There would, and I'm sure you've heard this already, there'd be multiple instances of noise early in the morning, trucks backing up with that beep, beep, beep at seven o'clock in the morning, especially in the summer when your windows are open. Constantly, and he, it, I felt like I was in an industrial plant. Consistent trash everywhere around that place, same thing, I could smell mulch, fertilizer, whatever they're using back there in the summer months. Scratch tickets all over the place, I know they sell lottery tickets, and unfortunately, people in Abington throw things everywhere. Consistent dust, when they would blow, I don't know what machines they were using, but there'd be dust coming over to my side. My cars would be completely covered with dust and dirt. And it, it's really funny, because going around, walking around, I like to take walks in the morning, and going past the sidewalk that was just finally fixed after the eight years that I'd been there. I said, how, I, I can't believe that this town even allows this sidewalk to be there, someone's going to kill themselves on it. I don't know if you've seen pictures of it before it was done, it was a hazard. And the little joke used to be, I'd walk around the superstore, and I would see Britta in the back, and I'd say, wow, a landscaping place in the back, and the front of the store looks like heaven, why can't they do something to make the store look better? But prior to last week, I saw a change. But for the eight years that I was there, there was no effort at all. And like everybody else is saying, I don't understand why all of a sudden, all of these things that these people have been complaining about for years, and things that I've noticed, this is my first time here, are being done. No effort to keep the area clean, the sidewalk. And to make it a residential area, I understand that, you know, they're a commercial business, but we're the residents that live behind it. And it's just the uncleanliness, the dumpsters. Recently, I had two dead rats in my backyard. And they have to be coming from that area, because I can't imagine they're coming from anywhere else. You know, I, I know that they've gotten some letters from other, other people praising the store and the owners. I don't think we're here for character, I'm sure that you're all very loving people. And you make it sound like there's a candy store going in the backyard here. I don't think anybody in this room would want to live and have to deal with that. We pay enough taxes in this town, big taxes, and we shouldn't have to live next to a dump. And that's what it is. If I wanted to live next to a dump, I'd boot and find one. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for him?
No. No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
I'm Steve Doyle, live at twenty-nine King Street. It's, it's just important for me, again, to reiterate how bad it's been for a long, long time. We have been dealing with this for years, and this is the first time they've ever done anything to try to make an effort to make the neighbors happy. I cut my grass, I pick up my leaves, I put my trash out on Monday, because that's the right thing to do. This is the first time they have ever tried to do the right thing. Denise showed you some great pictures of what it's been like trying to deal with these people all these years, and you have an opportunity now to protect us. We've been fighting this, and fighting this for years. This type of business, it just doesn't belong in this space. Just because you can give them a special permit, there's a reason they have to get it, so you can say no to them. So you can prevent them from going into this property. And, and I think we've given you enough information, uh, uh, enough facts, and told you how difficult it is, and how much we need you to protect us. This isn't a big neighborhood, you know, this isn't Hancock Street, it's not even all of King Street. You're talking about maybe six families that'll look into you to help us stop this from happening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for him?
No, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, yeah, please.
There, um, this whole brick King Street. If I understand correctly, Shaun, there says no organic waste. I don't know exactly what organic waste is, but I consider mulch organic waste. It stinks, it smells, and they're still going to be allowed to do that under his things. I don't want to reiterate everything I said before. The situation isn't good there, and they haven't been cooperative with the neighbors up to this point. Now that they have been caught in not obtaining the proper permits that they need there. Now they're going to be good to us, and I have a fear that once that permit is granted, things will deteriorate again. And I know you can come, but you can't be there all the time, and it means we're going to have to be monitored completely again. So I hope it doesn't get passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Um, yes, you're welcome to speak.
Good night, everyone in this room, my name is Alexander Bones, Alexander Great of Bones, I'm living three, three, seven, Washington, Sweet Abington. I agree to, everyone says here, the neighbors, I'm not disagree to no word you says. But I'm in Abington for twenty years, cooperate with the town grow, I saw build a new high school here. My kid's born here, fourteen years old daughter, twelve years old boy, both women in high school. If you guys deny it, of course, I have to move the garage, go somewhere, for sure. Um, I love the pictures you show here, it's good. And we never bury trash, I don't carry ice melt in a parking lot, yes, we have a sand, we do ice melt. In the winter time, we pour the sand in a truck, go out in a commercial property, load the South Shore supply, or Hudson supply. So, we don't carry the mulch, okay, I understand, the smell. We can, I can fix that, normal mulch. The reason I carry my supplies is because we save a lot of money. If I bought a mulch, the South Shore supply is a fifty dollars a yard, if I buy a high amount, like eighty yards, I pay like twenty-nine dollars, twenty-three dollars. I have a family, and work, work, work. So only one question I ask. This table, and the neighbors. I think everyone in this room has a family, has a kid. I think everyone in this room, I love you, mm-hmm, and thank you. I think everyone in this room has a second chance. Okay, it's a mess, are we here to fix? Think you failed, you have a second chance to raise again, and fix everything behind, start fresh. If you start kicking people, any town, and your neighbor, if you think that's fair, move forward. But I'm asking the neighbors and you for second chance. Give me a second chance, I proved to you, everything going to go good. If I fail, the town doesn't, Nick doesn't have to go there and say, you have to move. I recognize myself, I move my own. That's all I ask, one chance. I start small, God bless me, my business grow, doing well, and I tried to help as much I could. That's all. And I'm not here to ask for favor, I'm going to ask for like a chance for me, for my business, for my kids. If I move from the Abington, I have to move my kids from school, they're fourteen years in this town, they love the high school here, they love the middle school. They practice sport here, so I hope there's a count, if not, no hard feelings, we move on. Thank you, everyone, thank the neighbors, and my apologies to you if I caused all this frustration, but we're here to fix it, I hope we continue working together, if not, thank you, God bless her all.
Thank you. Any questions for him at all, Dr. Lee, or no?
No.
Thank you.
Nice, I will, I speak, don't you?
Sure.
So I apologize for only having one copy of these pictures, but you can keep them.
Take them and just pass them along as we.
My husband submitted paperwork, I believe, about a year ago, to the Board of Health. And that was where those pictures were taken. My name is Suzanne Doyle, I live at twenty-nine King Street. I've been a resident and lived in that home for 33 years. I love my home. I love my neighbors. I love my street. I, I would never want to move away from here. This is making me not want to live there anymore. Sorry, I'm going to get upset. Multiple phone calls, called the Board of Health. At one point, spoke to Chris Schultz. And he said, we're getting frustrated now because we've asked them to move the pile, which was causing the really bad odor, to the point where can't sit on my front porch. Can't open the windows in my home in the middle of beautiful weather. I don't want to sit in a shut up house in the middle of the summer. And I don't think anybody would want to. It would have been an act of good faith had those concerns got responded to in a timely manner. Again, those pictures were taken a year ago. It took forever for that pile to go away. It wasn't within a very like hours or a day that was alluded to at the beginning of this. The slamming of dumpsters being emptied, there's a store there. I get it. We've now added to that slamming with whatever comes from the trucks that are in the back parking lot. Slamming of whatever, there's a back loader in that picture or a front loader, whatever you call it. It's gone from a convenience store to a gas station to now a I think it says it's a landscaping company, a masonry company, hardscaping company. And I appreciate people wanting to raise their children in a town that I raised my children in. I appreciate that. I also want to have peace in a house that I've lived in for 33 years. I want to sit on my front porch and recuperate from surgery that I just had. I don't want to sit in the house in the middle of the summer. So to allude to everything my neighbors have already spoken to, I, I second those sentiments. All of it. For the first time in 33 years, and maybe I just never saw them, I am now seeing rats running across the street in the middle of the night, in the middle of the afternoon while I drive my car down the street. I never used to see them. I get it. There's rats. There's, you know, maybe it is a big problem in the town. I'm reiterating all of those concerns and what I've just spoken to you and the pictures I've just shown to you for your consideration. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to come up? Heard from most people. Sean, I'll give you the floor here for the time being.
Thank you. And I obviously haven't been part of this history the way you have. And I appreciate the sincerity that you bring to this, these meetings. And frankly, that's the whole purpose of this public hearing and these type of public hearings. Because you're right, it's very difficult sometimes when you have a neighborhood issue, when you call a certain person at Town Hall or whatnot and things don't get done. Sometimes it's not my jurisdiction or I'm limited in power. And so that's one of the reasons why I have special permits for certain types of uses, because it requires a public hearing. It requires neighbors to have their input. It has the business to have their input. And this board has a tough job because every time they vote and make a decision, they're voting against somebody and they're voting for somebody. And it's, it's just, it's the love of the job that these guys sit here or every third, every second, third, first Thursday, whatever night this is, second Thursday of the month. So I understand your issues and I hope you understand my responsibility to my clients. So we're doing our best. There are two special permits here. One is for the storage of the work trailers and the storage container, to which I haven't heard any testimony at all that those are any issues. That they're certainly not causing dust, noise, smoke, rats, or anything like that. So I can put that one aside for a second. I understand everything's kind of interrelated, but they're, they're two separate special permits. It appears to me that the biggest issue is the storage of materials. And what typically is out there is the, the hardscape materials. There was photos of like some granite curving, there's been patio blocks, typical landscaping, hardscape materials, along with the things, the stuff that's containing the bins, sorry, which is mulch or gravel or sand, depending on the time of the year. And, and for the record, I, I don't think we ever said we don't do snow removal. They do, like any other landscaping company, that's what they do. I just wanted to, for the record, indicate that our noise regulations don't apply to snow removal. And that's, if, if Brito wasn't on this property, Raj would have to hire someone to plow the snow off of his property. And some noise regulations don't apply to snow removal, just like they don't apply to when the town was up and down the street. Minor issue, but I just want to make that clear. We weren't trying to say we don't do snow removal. Yes, they do. When that occurs, they would get their trucks, put the sand in them, and they'd leave and go do their jobs, then come back when it's done. It appears to me that the storage of the materials is the more difficult issue that we're all dealing with, that they have been dealing with for a number of times, a number of years. I can see that a lot, the photos we saw earlier, I know some of them are several years old because you saw just the chain link fence. Several years ago, I don't know how many years ago, the wooden portions were added to the chain link fence. I can see the dating of it. That doesn't mean it didn't exist. I'm just saying, we're trying to get this site, you know, in order and operationally functional here in a business zone. Mr. Brito just said, his last name is Brito Gomes, Brito Landscaping, he would forego the storage of mulch. So it would be all organic materials, would be off the property. So you'd be left with things that don't have any smell, that don't increase rats. There's a lot of stuff that's getting mixed in here that's not with special permits. The issue with the dumpsters, you're right, that's the retail store issue. We don't, you know, that's not really what this is, this issue is, but I understand the complaints from the neighbors. We're asking for a special permit that in addition to parking our trucks, we would park the trailers in that storage container. That's the one. The second one for the outdoor storage of materials, we would concede, if you want to say there's absolutely no organic material whatsoever, which would include, I guess, mulch or specifically say mulch, that's fine. Frankly, if the board has to say, well, I'll leave it for the board to determine what you need to say. But I think we are making a coordinated effort. The reason, the fact that it's been brought to this hearing does create an opportunity and does now give the neighbors more leverage. And it certainly gives the town more of a right to bring a hammer down. Because now this is going to be a written decision that not only is issued and filed with the town clerk, but it gets filed at the registry indeed. So all future owners are on notice of this property. So that's why it's important that the conditions be specific and try to address each and every concern that we can. So I mentioned the six that I had put in writing, and I know you have that in front of you somewhere. If there's something more that be needed, we're certainly, you know, subject to your review. But I think Alex expressed, he apologized for the past, the past. We're looking to do it in the future. I understand the neighbors. Some of the neighbors are somewhat untrustworthy of that. I understand that. And that's where a decision with conditions might be able to protect a business on a business property while protecting the neighbors who abut the property. I put in writing all of our arguments. I think it's enough to justify at a minimum a special permit for the storage trailers. And I think that there is an opportunity to put conditions on the special permits for the outdoor storage materials. We have rehashed this now for two nights, so I won't spend any more time with it. I greatly appreciate our board's patience, but I also appreciate the neighbors being frank and respectful. And I hope we can work this out.
Sean, I have a question. Sean, questions?
Sure.
There were pictures of a front end loader. Is that part of the equipment that's, he's looking to have stored?
No. That was a Mirage.
No, no. He's not saying that.
Is it out there anymore? What, what's the status?
It's sold.
You sold it? It was there. It is not there.
So when you say trailers, what do you mean specifically as far as trailers?
The trailer, it's a picture, you know, the, it's like a carpenter's trailer. It's an enclosed trailer. I think there's two of them on site. And then they have a, like a landscape, they're like a flatbed trailer.
Flatbed trailer, yeah.
So I think there was a total of four.
So there's, it's right here in the back.
Yeah. But no front end loader?
No, we're not supposed, and if you want to put that as a condition, that no front end loader should be put on this property, then that's, we're going to have to deal with that.
We still have to have a way to get things off the ground into a vehicle to transport them elsewhere.
I would suggest, and I don't, I'm not a contractor, either it's a bobcat or, or he uses another location at some point. But to close him down now, he, this is the type of business you can't just simply move in 30 days. You know, it's, it's very difficult. You have to find a, a site that's properly zoned for it. Has the, the, you know what zoning rules apply. So we have submitted what we think are pertinent and relative, relevant conditions. And I think there's probably a few more that you may want to add. And once those are in writing, then it's law. If, if there's no compliance with any of those conditions, the building department, whether it's this building inspector or a future building inspector, has a right to shut down that property. We'd like to just ask for the opportunity for Brito Landscaping to move forward with those conditions, with those restrictions. And we understand the issues that have abruptly formed. So they're well aware of things that have to be done moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Do I have to just...
Well, Alex, never had a problem with your character. You're a good guy. Raj has never had a problem with your character. Again, Sean's good. He paints an innocuous picture. The problem is doing all the right things, the wrong thing can happen with a, any kind of a spill or something like that. We keep getting away from what I remember the main focus was. When they put the gas station in, they were worried about the back. We were going to have a buffer zone. It didn't get in there. Common sense. We talked about common sense. They used it last time. Can we use it this time because it wasn't recorded? And as far as, you know, getting Alex another yard, I think I even said to you, I, I, I've seen two or three other places. I, I was in the construction field. I know people I could ask. He belongs in another place. It's not, no one's trying to throw him out of here because we don't like what had happened. It didn't help anything. Okay? But that type of business does not belong there. And you guys have the opportunity to make sure it doesn't happen in the future. And again, how are they going to unload? You know, you're going to get those innocuous pictures of what the trucks were. You're going to get the innocuous pictures of the nice mouse or stuff like that. But when you, when you go fast and these guys have good problems happen. There's a couple of better places. I even saw one at One Rock and I know the guy. There's a couple. Depends on where he would want to go. No one would kicking him out in 30 days and stuff like that. Sean, we would work with him, okay, to help, you know, for him to relocate and stuff like that. But as good as the person he is, as good as the person Raj is, what they're trying to put back there is that square peg in a round hole you were referring to, young lady. Okay, I know. And I just don't know your name. And that's why I think that was nothing disrespectful.
You called me Young, so it's great. I'll take it.
There was nothing disrespectful at all. We're trying to put a square peg in a round hole. Everyone, I love everyone here.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions before we go to the board.
Go right ahead, please.
Yeah, come up to the audience. Just repeat your name and address, please.
Denise Trot, 23, King Street. So one of my questions is, how is this mulch or materials going to be delivered? Big dump trucks, correct?
Can I ask a question? How about if I can stay there, no more material, no hardscape, no mulch, no gravel, sand? Just let me park my trails in my truck, quiet.
So strictly trailers?
Just give a chance. Just start fresh again. If it, I promise, there's not going to be any issue or anything happen. No more material. I ask you for a favor.
What about, um, do you continue to store sand?
No.
So when I referred to the, the snow removal
No more, no more supplies.
And sanding, one of my videos has trucks coming in all hours of the night to replenish with sand. So I know...
You just let her finish and then you can call the guy.
I know noise and stuff, you say, doesn't apply to the snow removal. But when you listen to trucks idling, and in my video, there's three of them lined up waiting for their sand in the middle of the night, besides the lot being plowed. I mean, you heard them say they're, they're doing the paving in the parking lot after hours. A lot of activity, loud activity. And I don't know if it's the, the way the plot is laid out, but it is louder in the back of my house than it is in the front of my house. It echoes, it amplifies it. So that would be my, that's another concern. And my last concern is every time you guys clean your lot, you use the industrial leaf blowers. And again, this is a video and I'm gonna, I'm still working. John can attest to, I was on the phone for hours today with the Geek Squad. There is, and the neighbors have seen it too. It is like a twister, and you saw her too. It's got to be 25 feet high of dirt, sand, whatever else is in that parking lot, oil, most poop, rat poop, trash. And with the leaves, you can see this huge dirt, dust devil coming. Imagine what it's like for us when there's no leaves, the other seasons of the year. Because you guys clean that lot multiple times a year. And you have three or four guys out there, some with the regular blower, some with the big push blower. And it comes right to my house. Our cars are covered, little pebbles. I've called Town Hall. They have taken a ride by while it's happening. Lindsay, as a matter of fact. You know, that's just, in my opinion, that's really inconsiderate. There's no way you can't see that dust cloud. But anyways, I digress. My questions are about the sand, trucks coming in, what kind of trucks? Dump trucks, um, construction trucks. You know, the big yellow tonka trucks for lack of, I don't know what each one's called, but I mean, you're welcome to come to my house anytime and see how loud it really is and what it looks like from my house and the lights all night shining on my house. Because you do have lights on the side of the store, right? Those little lights. The red lights on top of the gas tanks, they stay on all night. They don't go out. So to say everything's on a timer and goes off, I won't say that's exactly the truth either. And I have tried to communicate with you guys. Anytime you want, like I said, you can come to my house and check it out and see what it's like from my side of the fence, literally. Because it's not pleasant at all. Those are, those are my two questions.
Thank you. You want, you want to talk, Sean, or do you want?
Could I just ask a clarification? So is, is a request for a special permit under H5, is that being withdrawn?
Well, that's what I was just going to bring to the table. So just for clarification, the special permit under H2, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the storage of trailers.
Correct.
H5 is for the storage of materials used with a commercial business. Based on what Alex just said, we would like to withdraw without prejudice the request for the special permit. Well, before I get there, what I would, what I would propose is if the board were to look favorably on H2 to allow the storage of trailers, that part of that decision would be language that allows, that, that basically requires him to remove all stored materials. Can I ask for 90 days so he can find a place to move it? If that's fair, then it'd be gone. It could be, it could be gone before 90 days.
Six months at least.
I don't, well, he's asking six months. I, I... That, that be removed. I would withdraw without prejudice the storage of materials. Materials only because I don't know who the next tenant might be. And, you know, someone may reapply for that. So I'd rather just kind of wipe that off the board. Does that make sense, Attorney Questle?
We would have to go through your conditions, Sean.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, if we withdrew outright...
Do any of the conditions apply to H2?
Two is gone.
Maybe your post-vehicle weight limit?
So the first condition that I suggested was that lighting the gasoline canopy and wall packs...
That can stay.
Yeah, that would remain.
Two is gone. Three can stay.
Just so the neighbors, and two was the stockpile of glass clippings. We don't even have to bother with that because we're not allowing anything.
Three is just reinforcing an existing bylaw though, right?
Right.
Okay.
So three, yes, there's no starting of engines or trucks before 7:00 AM. That's a bylaw. So it doesn't hurt to have it in there as a condition. Four is to install the six-foot solid fence. We would agree to do that?
Yeah.
Okay? The owner will agree to do that. Five was to clean the leaves on the other side of the fence of debris and all that. It's, the debris, I understand what you're saying now about the, the blowing of the parking lot. On one, you understand on one end, my clients are trying to keep it clean, but I understand now on the other side of the fence, what's happening is that it's blowing up.
Can I interrupt here for a second?
Sure.
I'm not sure two is gone, because the complaint was that some of the debris was in the truck beds. And if they're still parking their truck bed with the truck beds and there's debris in there, then you're still gonna have that smell, so.
It's only for, it's only for trailers.
Well, if you wanna, if you wanna limit, condition into, as to what exactly is gonna be there, is it gonna be just trailers?
Well, we're not stockpiling it, I mean dumping it on the ground.
No, I know.
If something's in a truck bed overnight, I don't, I don't think, I think to use.
That was one of the, that was, I think, one of the complaints.
I, I think one of the questions was, I think.
It could be in the truck bed for four days, because you don't get to the place and it starts to smell, so I, I would prefer that the truck bed be empty, if it's gonna be parked there. And I think you said that that was okay when we first started.
Maybe say covered.
I don't think that's gonna prevent the smell.
Why?
I don't know, I, I just.
But he's not allowed to store, he's not allowed to store trucks. He's only allowed to store open lot storage of registered transport vehicles.
I'm not storing trucks, I'm parking trucks, there's a difference.
He's still parking trucks.
I can park trucks, I can't.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
I'm not storing trucks for sale and things like that.
Got it.
So, if, if there's gonna be trucks parked there, I think that the bed has to be clean, empty.
Of organic, I mean, what if I have a, what if he has a load of gravel?
That's fine.
Okay, so, okay, so we're, all right, let's work this out.
Well, I thought we'd had, because that was, when you got up here, that was one of the things you said, was the truck bed would be clean.
No, no, I said.
Yes, you did, he said he wouldn't, he would dump it before he got to the, the lot, even though they have to sometimes close at four o'clock and he can't get there, it would still come empty.
No, I, I didn't say that, I, I, what I said, I'm sorry, but if I, let me repeat what I intended to say. We said we would not stockpile leaves and debris on it, because that's when the sun gets to it, if it stays there for, you know, an extended amount of time, water gets to it, that's when it starts to break down and smell. I said there are times when they, if they leave the site after the disposal places close, they have to come back to the site, it's on the truck, but they can't empty the truck on the site.
That's not how I took it, but that's fine.
Nope, that's how I meant it, I'm sorry, so.
As far as I'm concerned, the truck bed would need to be empty.
Of organic materials, okay. We will have to make that work.
Um, I mean, five, I appreciate, but I'm just concerned about what that's gonna be for the building commissioner, if he's getting calls that it's been fifteen days since the leaves were, you know, blown or whatever, I mean, I don't really wanna put our town officials in that position.
How do we enforce that, that's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how you can require that.
I think the only thing that could happen is if they had a log in the store that I could spot check if I wanted.
Sean, he says the leaves he grow every week on, on the King Street.
We're trying to figure it out, it's, it's just, it's.
It's hard to administer.
There's no way you can.
Yeah.
There's no way you can condition that. Even agreed.
Good point.
It's also contingent on a landscaping company being there, which
Right.
that has.
Yeah, I don't think we can leave it in there.
You really can't, if I, if I may, I would.
It's very generous, but it's hard to administer.
And we would appreciate if they actually do it, but we can't enforce it.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And then six would stay in, which is the special, limit the number of trailers to no more than four and allow one lockable storage container?
Right.
Are there any other conditions?
Based, based on what was brought up at the last meeting, I know that wasn't brought up again tonight, but there were complaints about washing vehicles on the premises, I would ask that there wouldn't be any washing of vehicles on the premises. There was complaints about making, making repairs of equipment at the premises, I would ask that that not be.
Repairs, I have no issue, I don't know why there's a problem hosing down a.
What, do they have a hose? Is there, is there water out in the back there?
If there's, if they've been washing, I'm assuming there's a hose.
No, there's no water here.
There's no water there, okay. You can prohibit washing of equipment, I guess.
Yeah.
I, I, but I, well, I don't, no, I, I, I would request you don't do that, because I don't know why it's necessary, and I don't know what the future may hold.
Well, I'm, I'm just raising it because that was one of the complaints at last, the last meeting, was there were a couple of people who got up and said that, that people were
That they were washing.
Washing vehicles and it was. Okay.
I don't recall that as being an issue. Repairs are things, of repairs of vehicles, Sean, that can be prohibited.
I don't know if repairs of vehicles was the issue, or repair of equipment that they, they work with.
Equipment and.
Like their blowers and their backpacks and all that. Well, you gotta fix them somewhere, I mean, I mean, it's a business.
Yeah, but it's, this is, this is not the business, this is just a place to store their vehicles, that's what we're being told.
That's what, that's the definition.
That's what we're, that's what we're coming down to.
Right, that's what it is, it's a place to store their vehicles.
Okay, um.
One, one other one.
Sorry, sorry.
We can, we can condition this to just this one particular tenant?
No.
We can't.
No, the, the special permit runs with the property, runs with the property, yeah. I mean, if a different type of tenant came in, maybe, but if a different landscaping company came in, I don't think you could.
One sec.
It's up to the chairman.
Yeah, it's, it's different.
Ian, you get to your resolution on this one. So if I, if I'm, if I'm clear on, make me, if, if another tenant came in after this special permit was issued, and it was a landscaper, that as long as they follow the same rules it was setting for this landscaper, they would be allowed to take them in under that special permit.
Right, it runs with the land, so I, I don't know.
So there's no way the structure, he said that this decision is only for the board, for this specific occasion?
If it was, so.
You can't put an expiration date on it or anything? No, because that, he could work for twenty years there.
So there is one case, the Hopgarden case, that, um, it was a solar, um, it was a solar special permit for solar, and they did, um, limit it to three years for them to come back and check, you know, check it back in, and that was, that condition was held to be valid because of the unusual circumstances of the, um, use that they allowed, they allowed it to be, um, connected to an, an actual owner slash user. Zoning is not supposed to be about, um, ownership, it's not supposed to be about who it is, it's only supposed to be about the use, dimensional, acquire, you know, setbacks, things like that. motion out.
You have any more questions for Sean before I have somebody else come up? Would you like to come up and speak again? Okay.
And it's also important to remember, this isn't a, this isn't a general commercial district, so many, many other things could happen there, by right, without even coming to you guys.
Right.
Uh, Steve Doyle, twenty-nine, King Street, again, Mr. Manny, you actually asked my question.
Sorry.
You, you almost, uh, clayed it up for me, but I just wanna reiterate, that, like, what Sean said, this is law, like, what hap, if you voted, this is gonna impact not only previous tenants of the land, but the previous owners of the property across the street, you know, so it, it, it's just important to do that, and again, I reiterate that we, this is not a good use for this land, to have a company like this in there. And it won't be a good use for this land twenty years from now, if you were to approve this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name and address again, this is clear.
Denise Trot, twenty-three, King Street, so my question, just for clarification, what is it about storing, like the leaves and the grass clippings? I know it's just for trailers and storage, but.
There will not be.
Okay, perfect, because.
If what happens, happens, in withdrawing that request.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, no, but is there any other, uh, anybody else who wants to make a comment before we move forward with the process here? Any more comments, Amy, that we need to?
Sure, so, um, I just wanna be clear about your conditions. There's a few that I wrote down that might still apply, there's a lot that won't apply anymore, but, um, what about chemical storage, should we limit, um, because there are trailers and vehicles being stored there, should we limit no, no petroleum products to be stored? Or anything like that? And there was concerns.
In the trailers themselves?
Yeah. I don't know, um, and then the, um, again.
Is the point that it's gonna be an empty trailers that are stored there, that's, that's the question?
Is it going to be, are they, they're all gonna be empty?
No.
Right, that's what I, I didn't think they were all gonna be empty.
This is why I'm confused.
But if they're landscape trailers, they usually have like gas cans and things like that, I mean.
So they have to be stored in the, inside the?
They have to be in the trailer.
Inside the trailer. Okay.
I would say.
There's no front end loaders to be stored, we wanna keep that probably?
I think so.
Okay. The, um, this, the stockpiles of actual materials will have to be removed within six months?
That's what was proposed.
Okay. We're gonna keep conditions one, three, and, one, three, four, and six from Sean's letter, or Attorney Riley, I'm sorry, Attorney Riley's letter.
Everyone tells me so.
No, people call me Young.
Or worse.
No organic materials to be stored on site or in truck tracks, truck beds. No washing of vehicles or equipment on the premises, and no, no repairs on the premises of vehicles or equipment?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a storage place, right, I'm just storing trailers, that's what you're looking to do.
Yeah, I'm just.
And what about, what about the storage containers, still, we're gonna have that there?
Yeah.
So, four, four trailers and a storage container.
Correct. I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to, because this is enforceable, I'm trying to envision what could trip this up, so, you know, if they're changing a spark plug on a blower, is that repair of a piece of equipment, piece of equipment scares me. Repair a vehicle pro, prohibition, I'm fine with. Prohibition on, on an equipment, I mean, most equipment that's for repair, we bring it down four seasons, honestly, so it's more like kinda maintenance that they do on it. But if it's a repair, it usually goes down to the repair guy. And so, if it can be limited to no repair of vehicles, that, we're fine with that.
I hope that's to be determined by the board.
Yeah. We will discuss. I don't, I'm not sure how to define that as the problem. Could the, could the equipment be repaired inside the enclosed trailer? Many times, yes, right, I would. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they will try to do that, so no one sees them changing a spark plug or an oil filter or whatever, on a.
I think the repairing could also lead to noise, you know, if you're repairing a, a weed whacker, and then you start it up and.
But that doesn't violate the noise order, I know what you're saying, I, I know, but this is a business property, so we're trying to make.
Exactly.
We're trying, right, we're trying to make this work. I, I get it, I, I don't, I don't think they're gonna be repairing every day, every three hours, so I don't know it's a huge issue, but I don't want it to be a reason to shut down the business. So repairing of, prohibition against repairing of vehicles, no problem.
How do you define equipment? What if they're, what if they're, the shovel handle comes off, is that, is a shovel equipment, I mean? Motorized equipment.
Or gas-powered equipment, or whatever.
This is the rabbit hole we go down, so.
Well, like you said, you wanna make sure everything is covered, so.
Okay, um, anything else we need to address straight away here, before we move on?
So, um, you do need to, there was a, um, a request to withdraw without prejudice, you have to approve that, you have, by vote.
That's a separate vote.
It's a separate vote, yes.
And what, what's, what do we, how do we determine the six-foot fence, is that just petitioner's choice as to what is put there, or is it?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Six-foot solid fence.
It, they showed pictures, he had pictures of it.
Not solid wood, not solid.
No, I thought you, with the, um.
That was, there's, there's a quote for, that's a, that's an older fence, that we're, we're gonna just get rid of that, and put in a brand-new fence, that's gonna be.
Is it wood, is it vinyl, is that your choice?
Whatever you choose.
Yeah, they have the map where they're putting it, yeah, and then.
Yeah, the quote.
Yeah.
But we leave that up to them to decide what kind of fence it is, or is that something that?
It's solid, six-foot, I don't think we can say that it has to be purple or white either.
No, no, but material, wood versus vinyl, or is that something that?
They have stockade listed, um.
The zoning bylaw does not speak to, it just speaks to a six-foot solid fence. And it's usually the owner's.
Choice?
Choice.
I'm just asking, just asking, just so everybody knows.
I mean, if you wanna come down hard as the end, you can pick, but I.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to make sure everybody knows what's happening.
Excuse me.
Mrs. Polver.
Sorry, I'm sorry, but you just.
You okay with a vinyl fence? As opposed to wood?
Let's hope. Mark three, King Street, I'm concerned about the fence that they've put up, because the fence that they've put up has deteriorated significantly, uh, there, so I, you know, I do have concerns about the fence.
Vinyl fence.
There, a wooden stockade fence doesn't last very long, especially if it's not treated at all.
That's why I raised the issue.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
We can install any wood fence, cedar, spruce, cedars are like twenty-five years, thirty years to rot. They have cans on the next side of the road that we install in asphalt, not gonna be installed on top of dirt, so it's more longer. It's more resistant when it's, when the town plow. When they plow it, they push the snow to the fence, if it's a PVC fence, it's a plastic, it's not support, the waste from the snow. One year, those sections gonna be cut. But if you want spruce, if you want cedar, if you want stockade.
Which one? Spruce or cedar?
I couldn't hear you.
Which one, spruce or cedar?
I don't think it matters.
Let's go with cedar.
Yeah, cedar.
Solid, solid cedar.
Okay, solid cedar, okay, got it. Okay.
The wood cedar will be added to my condition.
Excuse me, Attorney.
Okay.
Can we, can we use the words "and will be maintained" as part of the?
It's in the zoning bylaw, that fences are supposed to be maintained.
Okay.
Good fences make good neighbors, so let's hope that this helps.
Okay. Okay. So I think we've it seems like we've entertained all the public comments and responses, so next I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Why don't you, um, accept the motion to withdraw, or, or?
Do you think, should we do that first?
Accept the request to withdraw first, yeah.
As long as I have that six-month language in the other vote.
Yeah.
So, okay, so sorry, let's do this. You can close the public hearing, and you can vote on special permit under, um, I, under, it's H two, but I gotta figure out all the language here.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be.
One seventy-five, twenty-one, H two.
There you go. So we'll, you'll, you can take a motion on that with the conditions, and then you can accept the withdrawal of H five.
Okay. All right, so, let's, I'm entertaining a motion to close the public part of the hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Yep.
On favor? Okay, so, um, writing this out is gonna be interesting, um, but it sounds like, well, we've already defined what we need to define here, and we're gonna be pretty limiting on what.
We could ask town council in the conditions.
Yes, do you want me to, um, do you want me to state what they are again?
Yes.
And then you guys, okay, so it would be a motion, and then I'll do this, and then somebody can say so moved.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be a motion to approve a special permit under, um.
One seventy-five, twenty-one, H two.
Have to switch seats, uh, screens, so it's a special, it's a motion to grant the special permit under one seventy-five dash twenty-one, H two for the open lot storage of registered transport vehicles and trailers, which would be limited to four trailers and one storage container. And then, um, that would be on the conditions of all lighting at the gasoline canopy and wall packs on the southern side of the building shall be turned off at eleven PM each evening unless any seal coating or parking lot painting is in progress after hours. There shall be no starting or use of any small engines or large trucks before seven AM on weekdays, and before nine AM on weekends, with the exception of snow removal operations. Um, the owner shall install a six-foot tall cedar solid fence along King Street within thirty days after the expiration of the appeal period or sooner. The special permit shall number the trailers to no more than four and allow one lockable storage container. Um, there shall be no front end loaders stored at the property, there shall be no hazardous materials stored at the properties, stored at the property. There shall be no washing of vehicles or equipment on the property, on the. There shall be no washing of vehicles or equipment on the property, on the premises. There shall be no repairs of vehicles or gas powered equipment on the premises. And the stockpiled materials, goods and materials must be re- associated with Brito landscaping must be removed permanently from the property. Within six months of this decision being recorded, or being filed with the town clerk.
And no organic material being stored.
In the truck beds.
Sorry. And there's, that's right here, and shall, there shall be no organic materials to be stored on site in truck beds.
So moved? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, and then on to the.
Vote for me.
And then that is going to be a, um, uh, this is going to be the, well.
The applicant respectfully requests that our application for a special permit under section one seventy-five, twenty-one, H five be withdrawn without prejudice.
Make a motion to permit the withdrawal without prejudice?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their, their time and heart here, so. It's a very difficult thing to try to accomplish, to keep a good business in town, somebody who's working hard and their kids go to the same, excuse me. Tight schools that my stepkids did, and to respect the neighbors, so it's not a perfect solution, pretty one, but within the bounds of what we can do here, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm really thankful.
Yeah, I'll get him too. Yeah, I'll do this, yeah, I'll do it, no problem.
Yeah.
It being after seven oh four.
Well, after seven oh. Moving on, um, the people here for the other remaining issues, um, petitions, I'd like to address that now.
Just stay for one more, nine thirty.
Thank you very much, Amy.
I would.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Did more.
Thank you for everything you do.
Oh, thanks, it was nice to see you, buddy.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Amy.
Yes, nice to see you.
As always, there are.
I'd suggest that we do like, well, we usually do our training, and Amy come down and give us an update on what's happening.
Now?
No, no, maybe you can schedule the future.
Yeah, we'll do it, yeah.
We'll do it in an hour or so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Once we wrap up.
Not tonight. Can I ask anybody to leave the room that's, that, um, no longer has a petition or wants to speak on a petition remaining? So we can, we can finish ourselves up here.
Um, just, I'm gonna draft those decisions.
You're out on the next one, right?
Yes.
How come I draft those decisions?
Thank you, Amy.
Take care, Amy.
Bye, guys.
Drive safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience, guys.
Okay. Uh, the next item, we're gonna. Who's up next? Yeah, the, the next item, um, Mr. Burbine is going to recuse himself from this discussion. Um. Due to a business relationship, um, he didn't define how that works. Um, the petition of J. P. McGrath for a finding per Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, to extend enclosed porch, and then closed porch two feet on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located at one twenty-seven Oak Street on Assessors Map sixty-five, Lot twenty-two. In the high density residential R twenty zone, please let us know your name and address and what you're here to, what you're proposing.
My name's J. P. McGrath, I live in Pembroke, um, it's, uh, Michael Lee who lives at the address. We wanna rebuild this porch, and we wanna rebuild it instead of six by twenty-eight, we wanna do eight by twenty-eight, twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
It said twenty-eight in the petition, I believe.
Yeah, eight by twenty-eight.
Yeah. What currently exists in that porch?
It's in a closed porch, six by twenty-eight.
Heated?
Yes, heated, it's part of the house.
Um, no bedroom, no bathroom, no kitchen, nothing in there, just an open porch?
Exact same thing. Just a porch. Well, it's part of the living room, for what it is.
Is it part of the living room?
It's, yes.
Is the interior wall gone?
Yes.
Between the porch and the interior of the house?
It is.
So you're now extending the interior house out to the eight foot mark?
Yes.
That's what you're requesting?
Yes.
Could I ask a question? How long is the living room from the, what, what has, what had been the porch wall to the back of the living room? Ten feet, twelve feet? Are we looking at a twenty foot long living room?
Probably ten foot, ten foot, twelve foot.
Okay.
What do you think, it's ten feet? The walls of.
You got big eyes, come on now.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say it's ten, ten to twelve feet.
Okay.
No, he's talking about the living room and the wall.
Yeah, I'd say twelve feet deep.
Twelve feet.
Okay. Is it an open wall from one end of the house to the other?
No, it's just one little, it's just one area.
Just one area that it's open to?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a bedroom on the other side that's not gonna get extended, it's gonna stay the same.
Is it part of the foundation, or is it on still?
It's on footings.
Well, it's on footings?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the stoop in front, is, is that solid cement, or is that wood?
It is, but it's gonna get removed.
That's gonna be removed?
It's gonna be removed.
Will it be removed with new cement or new wood?
Wood.
Wood. Same amount of windows? Or more windows or less?
I think it's gonna be the same, yeah, the same. Yeah, it's gonna be a, yes, well, the, the door already, so I think it's gonna be the same amount of windows and doors.
Okay.
It's basically gonna look the same, it's just gonna be two feet.
No, you're just making it more non-conforming, basically, that's all you're really doing.
Well, that and making, so it's, it has to be rebuilt anyways.
So you're saying it's gonna come down one way or the other?
It's gotta come down one way or the other, it's just that we're gonna rebuild it, we might as well build it eight feet instead of six feet.
The, the construction you plan on utilizing will, will continue with the same character of the houses it is today?
Yeah.
Correct, you're not gonna put plaid, shingles up now?
No.
Okay.
No.
I'm sure.
What's in the tent out there?
Uh, some storage for cleaning up the property.
Okay.
Somewhere.
Was the tent, is, is the tent permanent, or is it?
It's, it's temporary, we cleaned it up, we started cleaning up the attic and the cellar, so we, then we have it upstairs, so it helps.
Looks like it's actually encroaching.
I was just gonna say that, thank you, Adrian.
My father had a big question, we had some, uh, uh, details.
I, I just point out that your, your left side of your tent, if I'm looking from the house into your property, is it encroaching in the fifth foot setback where it should not be on the, on the fif- anywhere between fifteen feet of your sideline of your property?
Okay.
All right, so if you looked at the dotted line on the plan that was submitted, okay, as you can see, right? Come on, Bob, right here. Up here, you see the, the line going up and down? That's the fifteen foot setback line, you're supposed to stay behind.
Okay.
So that, that tent should literally be about a foot farther over.
Okay.
So you're not on the, just in case your neighbor decides to be a.
One quick thing on that, it's an accessory structure, so ten feet.
Is it ten feet?
So this, this is the setbacks he has drawn here for the primary structure.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
So an accessory like a shed or something like that would be, would be ten feet.
Okay, I apologize, thank you.
Would a tent even qualify as a structure if it's not permanent?
I mean, this plan's from two thousand and six, so if it's still there, I'd probably consider it a structure.
That's been there for a while, huh?
These were there for a while.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. I rescind my conversation. Um, I'm done, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I don't have any o- other questions, um, would anyone else like to come up and speak on this matter? If you do, come up and speak at the podium, just, uh, let us know your name and address.
Yes.
And they gotta, they record all this stuff, so.
Yeah, my name's Michael Lee, one twenty-seven Oak Street, Abington, Mass. Um, we were originally doing a gutter repair and some ro- rotted wood that was behind the gutter, and we pulled it off, the wall, the walls all molded out, and the wood's all rotted in the frame of the structure that's there, the existing porch. So for the price that it costs to replace, six feet of distance of the room, it's not that much difference than make it, uh, to ask for eight feet. They, they make it usable apart of the house, like it always has, but it's just more comfortable, you know?
Thank you. You have any questions, or? Did you speak to any of your neighbors at all?
Um, a couple of them asked in, uh, they wanted them, me to, wanted them to come down to hel- help with anything, I just know, as far as I know, it's only if, uh, anyone's contesting the size of it or something like that.
Okay.
So personally, you know, I wanted not.
No, just, basically, you're just making non-conforming a lot more non-conforming, basically.
Basically, yeah.
And fixing the. And fixing the damage.
Fixing existing, yeah, exactly.
Or replacing the damage and making it a lot more non-conforming. Yeah. Okay, I, I don't have any other questions myself.
Mr. Chairman, I am done with my questions.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, uh, close the public portion of the session?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, it, it seems pretty obvious we should do this.
Well, it's common sense as far as I'm concerned, but I'm just one person, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the petition of J. P. McGrath for a finding per MGLC, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, to extend the enclosed porch two feet on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located on, excuse me, at one twenty-seven Oak Street on Assessors Map sixty-five, Lot twenty-two, in the high density residential zone. The board having found that, that's not subs- that's not substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming use, and that the, uh, the. Project conformed substantially with any plans submitted to the building department.
I second that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you very much.
This is how matters we, you know, like to have happen this much time. Listen. Thank you so much.
All right, I'll be here to see you. Thanks.
Good lucks. Okay. All right, um, finally, we get to the, the last petition of the evening.
Fellas.
Uh, the petition of David Payne for special permits under one seventy-five dash twenty-one F three to allow automobile repair. The property is located at twenty-five Oak Street on Assessors Map sixty-nine, Lot seven, in the Business Development B D zone. Please let us know who you are and why you're here.
My name's David Payne, owner of Payne's Welding, twenty-five Oak Street in Abington. And I've been there, well, I've been with Harry Cornover for forty years. I've been in the location I'm in now, twenty-five Oak, for, since nineteen ninety-seven, prior to that, I was at A hundred and Adam, which is next to Ron's motorcycles. So I've been, I've been in town since eighty-five, um, renting from Harry Cornover. And I never knew any, I came from Waymouth, I had a welding shop in Waymouth, I moved from there. To the location Abington, I seen a sign on the, on the woodjet by the old Abington Drive-In, and it said, uh, places for rent. I was in a regular building in Waymouth, but the guy was a jerk I was renting from, so I moved to Abington. I came to this town hall, I said I wanna open a welding shop in town, what do I have to do? This is forty years ago, mind you. And they said, I forget, this was forty years ago, they, I filled out a form, I paid them a fee, and that was that. I told them what I was doing, I said I welded just about anything and everything. I welded for every facility in this town, police station, the new police station, I just been down there a couple of years ago, did the urals, they all rotted out with stainless steel, which they should have done, I cheated up, but. I welded for Jason Lynn, on every school in town, I welded, just about every restaurant, not every restaurant, but I welded everything, about everybody and everything in town. I've never had a problem, I had. I believe Nick, I, yeah, Nick came down, I was okay in parts, said we're gonna shut you down because you don't have a, a business permit. I, I didn't even know, I never was notified, I never, they never said, I've been to, this town in nineteen eighty-five went to the town hall, which used to be over by the, the animal hospital there?
Yep.
I, I did, you know, no one ever told me, I needed, you know, I, I, I didn't know, I, I was shocked, he came down with a couple of guys and said, I wasn't even there. They said they were gonna shut me down. I was kinda shocked, you know, so anyway, uh, I'm not looking for problems with anybody, I'll do whatever I need to do. We had a little problem, still got some issues, you know, stuff we're supposed to, I don't know, I've been in the hospital, in and out of the hospital, I just woke up the other day, I had no vision in my left eye. Um, so I haven't really been around, I've been, I've been sick and in the hos- in all the hospital. Um, I was in a, a serious car accident, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the intersection of Route eighteen and, um, one thirty-nine. Taking, I was the first car line, I was coming from Rockland, gonna take at nine A M. Sunday morning, uh, twelve twenty-four, uh, twelve fifteen twenty-four. I was gonna tell, I was in the left lane, couldn't take a left, I was gonna go to Troops, get some bacon, and, you know. Car, to the right of me towards the subway there, and the light turned green, my light turned green, I, you know, I didn't gun it, I just rolled forward. And this girl from Brazil, Brazilian, twenty-five years old, it was her birthday that day. She hit me at about sixty-five miles an hour, she was trying to beat the light, she ran the red light, and keep on me, total car. If you see, I, I dropped my phone home, I, I don't have a window, if I did, I'd show you. You seen the car, you said I didn't survive, but anyway. I had my girlfriend's dog in the car. And, uh, three months later, the dog, I, I don't know what was in the accident, but I mean, we got hit hard. So ever since, I've had all kinds of hospital issues. When I went to the hospital on twelve fifteen, they told me I have a growth on my lung, growth on my liver, a growth on the pancreas, getting taken care of. So I've been in and out of the hospital, not had surgery, any of that, from now, I woke up the other day, I can't see out of this eye. I don't know why, but I can see, but I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't tell, if I, if I, if I go like, I mean, if I go like this, I can't, it's just a, a, a mint, like. I couldn't tell what you, what you looked like, just a blur. So my health hasn't been the greatest, so I haven't been able to, he's been, my nephew's been helping me, do things, I'm not able to be there. And so I, I, I just, I wanna comply with whatever you need me to do, I just haven't been there and, you know. Yeah, we clean the property a big time.
Fire department does the yearly inspection.
Yeah, the fire department, um, you know, I, I do, I do what I'm supposed to do, so I was, to my knowledge, I just didn't know any about, I was a total shock when you came down, I didn't, no idea.
Now you're here to get it cleared up, and you're looking for a special permit, right? That's basically.
I didn't, I guess I, when I need a business, I, I don't.
Couple things, I got called out for a complaint of someone living in a trailer down there.
They did people?
Showed up on site, realized that there was a lot of junk vehicles and an auto repair shop. Um, I was actually, that month, I've been doing the repair shop inspections I do every year, so recognize this one wasn't on the list. Asked, there was no license, then looked into it, no special permit either. Um, so issued cease and desist, similar to what I've done on other ones. If you're applying for your special permit or anything like that, keep operating while you're doing it, I'll put enforcement on pause, get before the board, get it sorted out. Assuming he gets it, then I just lift my order, if he doesn't get it, then I start enforcing on it. Doesn't he still need to go to the selectmen now, to get? He will absolutely need to go to the selectmen for the repair shop license, yeah, yep.
So should that come before we approve the special permit for the auto repair shop, though? If he doesn't have a license, he's not gonna be able to operate it, so it's kinda moved.
Uh, I don't think this, I mean, I'd advise the selectman not to grant it if the use wasn't allowed on the site.
Gotcha, yeah.
I think this would be the first step, um, I think he's, him or his representative have been talking to Nancy and gotten the applications and stuff like that. Um, it seems like they've made progress, I drove by today, they've certainly made progress cleaning up the site, still not what I'd like to see, but it's, it's a lot cleaner than, it's a lot cleaner than it was, that's for sure.
And then, when, with, once it goes to the selectmen, if they grant the, the business, uh, license, you'll have to any kid, whatever conditions they place on that?
It'll be subject to, I mean, you guys will have whatever conditions you place on the property, and the selectmen generally get into days and hours of operation and a, a number of cars on the site. Um, they usually don't do much beyond that.
What are we talking about in terms of cleanup, though? We gotta wanna grant something, and then if it's not up to your standards, you know what I mean?
Yeah, junk vehicles, um.
We're in the process, I'm in the process of getting, if you would.
Just tell us your name and address as we.
Brian Tucker, twenty-five Oak Street, Abington, Payne's Welding. Um, we're, I'm in the process of cleaning everything out of there, within, it, it's forty years of his junk, and he's a pack rat.
I'm not only mine, Tom, passing the gas off.
All right, so anyways, um, on top of trying to do repairs and stuff, I, I'm working on the outside. I tried to put five hours in, in the afternoon to clean and everything out, 'cause I know how it's supposed to be, so, um, I'm doing my best.
What do you think you got left on, in terms of time to get it?
Terms of time, probably. Month and a half, if I can get, um, everything done, all I have left is, is three vehicles, a bunch of scrap trailers that gotta go, um.
Small.
Yeah, small, small little landscape trailers that are full of junk, um, and I think that, just, I'll ask for a month and a half just to, just to cover it.
Yeah.
If, I mean, I, I could shut down for three days and call in junkers and have them come in and make a mess and. after, I- I gotta do it organized, just rot tools and stuff in there, so.
If that's acceptable.
By the time.
What would a condition that, what- what language would you like to see in a condition in terms of how you want the property in order for them to- within maybe like ninety days or something? Free of all debris and-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would work out fine. The, um, I mean, this picture's from a couple of years ago. It's just the aerial from online. It's labeled nine hundred Adams, that- that address isn't correct. It's twenty-five Oak. I'm not sure what, I don't control the labeling on it. But what they have on the plan they submitted for this with fourteen spots is a lot more reasonable. The storage of junk vehicles isn't allowed anywhere in town.
That, excuse me, is, oh, that's not us. The all those vehicles behind that fence are not part of Payne's Welding.
Okay, but what they'd be issuing for is the property. So like Amy talked about earlier, it's not- it's not the business you guys are licensing, it's the property.
Okay.
The select board will be licensing the business.
Are you the only tenant?
No, there's, can I point out on the-
All right, please do.
So this is where we are right here.
Yeah.
This little square. And then you got Abington Auto Transmission, Ab- Abington Automatic that takes all this to here, and then this, um, seven sixty-six Adams is a Panda, I believe, automotive. This, he sells trucks. This is all his storage right here. And then this is, all this over here is Ron's, and that's Harry's equipment for his business. But we have this right here, and- and that's it. This stuff has nothing to do with Payne's Welding, nothing.
So my- my enforcement order is against the property owner, not Payne's Welding.
Yeah.
But Payne's Welding wants to get a business license, right?
Their- their license would be Payne's Welding through the select board. You guys are addressing this property as a whole. I don't think you guys can condition the left side of the property has a license and the right side doesn't.
No. So whose junk cars are all those?
I don't know. I enforce on the property owner.
They are Pandas, they're the-
It's ultimately his responsibility, in my opinion, to maintain it.
It's a separate unit C. Where unit C in then Abington Automatic? He's paying for Harry extra storage for out back.
But the guy, that kid, what's his name? He left all those things in store.
You don't assign him?
His stuff still left, those are units of that.
Yeah, my order was mailed directly to him. I posted a notice here. I talked to them as a business that was there, but-
Harry's very aware of it.
He's aware of it, yeah.
My enforcement's on the property owner, not Payne's Welding.
Do any of the other tenants, um, are they delinquent on getting a business license?
I- I don't believe anyone on the property has a business license, to my knowledge.
So we're gonna have other people come in for the same purpose, right?
You guys are only addressing the property. The select board would deal with individual tenants.
Okay. So did he ever have a business license to operate a welding business?
Back in nineteen eighty-five.
I mean, I have no reason not to believe him, but every business license needs to be done every year.
Every year, you gotta go-
So having it for one year in eighty-five doesn't really apply.
I know. They told me, when I went to the town hall.
Okay.
Forty, forty years ago.
I get it, I get it. So I'm just trying to clarify from my own brain. He had a welding business. For him welding a bus or a truck or anything, that's just a welding business. He's not repairing them, he's just welding the frame because that's what he does.
There's a large amount of junk cars laying around and cars ripped half apart. It seems to be un-welding, in my opinion.
Okay, and- and it could be that the owner of the property is using his prop- his area to store things that don't belong to him.
Very, I don't get into-
It doesn't make a difference.
Whose area is what. I- I look at a property, but that's why my enforcement order is against the property owner.
Okay.
It's- it's ultimately his responsibility.
Okay.
As I tell others, pretty often.
But each individual, no matter who the tenants are, if there's only one tenant or seven tenants, they all have to have a business license and stuff.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, but we're looking at the property as a whole, and you could give them ninety days and it applies to everybody and you can start your-
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
Yeah, very grateful, thank you, Nick.
Yeah, it certainly would apply to everyone on site. The, um, if- if they wanted that special permit. The cleaning up of vehicles, I could enforce without them getting a special permit either way. The, um, they don't, I mean, it's open lot storage of junk vehicles, which is not allowed. So this special permit, them applying everything like that, I give them the benefit of the doubt, let them get through this. It would be crazy to shut down a business for you guys to then open it back up if it's not causing a life and safety issue, but the, um-
They seem to have made progress already and are eager to finish the, their part of the cleanup.
Yeah, it just-
As Andrew pointed out, we'll put that in the determination.
I'm confused.
You were born.
Hmm.
You were born, that's all I can hide. The rest of it's on your own.
Um.
Go ahead.
So the actual, so whatever we do with the special permit isn't gonna impact this enforcement order because this is against Henry Conover and the- the property as a whole, correct?
Yes, so it will affect the aspect of they need a special permit to do automotive repair.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we're even applying here to store vehicles. So what they applied for is those fourteen spots, which would be in and out. I wouldn't consider that to be storage. What you're seeing out back is- is open lot storage of junk vehicles.
And that's another issue that you need to address?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that's separate from this?
We don't have to address the-
So these fourteen parking spots?
Which is the ones he's putting around, so around the building.
Just to him.
I mean, you guys would be telling the building that, I don't know if you guys wanna get into how many spots or anything like that, the select board does.
Right.
I leave it to them, myself.
But you guys are more getting into whether they can do automotive repair on the site. Yeah, they're not asking for open lot storage.
But I guess in terms of-
But if you want to condition it that they're in compliance with that.
Well, we can't issue that because that would impact whatever's back there as well, correct? So we can't just limit the, then, within ninety days, they have to have the property free of all open lot storage and debris because that means that Conover's gotta get all that out of there, right?
The property owner would be responsible, yeah.
Isn't something you would like in the- in the special permit?
I mean, I think anything I- I wouldn't support issuing a special permit for one thing, when the rest of the property's not gonna be in compliance.
There is a fence.
I- I think we can't pick and choose what we're gonna, we're gonna be right in this corner, but wrong everywhere else.
So that's gonna be an issue for us.
That makes your job impossible.
Yeah, I mean-
Do you talk to-
If you guys are open to continuing or something like that, to see the progress that can be made.
Yeah, we-
Even if it's sixty days.
Yeah.
He's aware of his property, he just-
And they're still operating, right?
They're- they're still, and I'm still- And I'm still hopeful it's operating, right?
And he just, everyone runs-
But you're working every day, right?
Yes.
You're working every day?
Yes.
Okay.
And he has weird, there's a fence around.
Your property.
So behind the fence, Nick, you burned you. Out back there, Panda Auto who rents from Harry, who's-
And he's got the business out front.
Yeah, but he has, I don't know who, there's a vehicle, Ben is in Mogate. Remember Mogate, you guys? Carl Camp?
Fortunately, yes.
They was sitting right here, well, they're right here.
What was the, what's his name? What's that, what's Mogate's name?
Carl Camp.
Russell Pace.
Oh, Russell, Russell, yes, yes.
Yeah, those guys used to put cars back there. They charge the police department. But from the fence forward towards Oak Street, that's where on the, looking at the building, the left side.
We just wanna keep on doing what we're doing.
It's cleaned up.
That's all we want.
Considerably since-
I think a good idea might be, continue, maybe the December meeting, December eleventh. Maybe they can talk to the property owner, make it clear that he should probably be here, 'cause he could probably better make promises about the cleanup and maybe even make progress ahead of time. If you guys wanna invite me out the week of that meeting to come out, I could take a few pictures, record a little bit.
I'll have you, I'll assume as, um, I'll have a cleanup before, I'll have you up before.
I think close, close meeting would be best, so I'd have a-
Okay, okay, so nothing falls back in just-
But I think it's important for you guys to get the property owner involved, because what's going on around you guys is affecting you.
Yep, absolutely.
It has it back.
I never- So I- I know you guys might not be doing anything about it, but
I'll bet you're getting out of there.
This is really the property owner's benefit from this.
Yeah.
This permit, too.
Whether you guys want us to do it or not.
So they've agreed to the- How recent is that picture?
I believe it's twenty twenty-three. That's most of these mass map reviews.
Have you been out there and seen? Is there still a lot?
I- I haven't been out back anytime soon.
Have won that?
Yeah.
Just a question, Nick.
Yeah, absolutely.
So would you- Have them come back in December? Um, would that sixty-day clock we talked about start for the rest of the property, or is that our-
No.
I think it would be for you guys to discuss at that meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, it would, um, I would love to see some great progress before then. I'm sure you guys would, too.
How can we, well, I guess this how are these letters sent so that we know that the guy got it?
He came in and spoke to me.
Yeah.
Right, right after. I sent it certified mail. I sent it certified regular mail. He came in with the letter, the property owner, spoke to me. Pretty much told me the tenant would be taking care of it.
He signed the application.
And he's, he signed the application.
He's the one who signed that?
They both did, yeah.
Yeah, we have an applicant, the property owner on there.
So-
Sixty days, they need to agree to the extension? Just kidding.
I think to be safe with it, absolutely. The, um-
Okay, so if for some reason I can't get him to clean up that back, are we in trouble then?
No.
No.
Yes.
But you're not gonna get your-
Yes, yeah.
Absolutely.
We're in trouble for this.
If they don't clean up on that.
So you guys aren't in trouble for this. It's the property owner has the enforcement order.